We welcome everyone to the Provo Municipal Council Meeting. It is 5:30 PM on Tuesday, October 4th, 2016. We're gathered here in the City Center Municipal Council Chambers at 351 West Center in Provo, Utah. This meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube, Provo Channel 17, but will also be available for on-demand viewing. The council requests that citizens help maintain the decorum of the meeting by turning off electronic devices, being respectful to the council and others, and refraining from applauding during the proceedings of the meeting. We will begin with a roll call. Mr. Parker?
Wayne Parker.
Dave Connect.
David Harding.
George Stewart.
Kim Santiago.
Dave Sewell.
Dave Van Buren.
Gary Winterton.
Brian Jones.
Cliff Strachan.
Thank you, and we excuse Mayor Curtis tonight. We will begin with an opening prayer that will be given by Chuck Hugo, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance that will be provided by our Scout Troop 1845.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful for the opportunity to work as members of our city, to understand the needs of the city and as citizens, and find ways to provide them as they need, so that we have a good place to live and that people want to be here. We're grateful for our city and ask Thy blessing upon it, that it'll have the weather and the moisture it needs, that it'll have the leadership it needs, so that it can continue to grow. Please watch over the leadership, so that they will be guided in their thoughts, and that their decisions will represent the citizens, and help them to be provided for and to grow. In these blessings we pray, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
May the audience please rise and salute. Center Guard Forward March. Halt. May the audience please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. About face march. Center Guard Halt.
Thank you. We'll now have a Neighborhood Spotlight by Michael Mertz, South Franklin Chair.
Very happy to be here. I know many of you on the council. Look forward to giving you a brief overview of Franklin South Neighborhood. My name is actually without the T, but that's fine. If I could, just go ahead and give you a brief overview before I present some slides that give you a visual overview of the neighborhood itself. Franklin South is a neighborhood that is in transition. There's a lot of construction going on right now, and we don't have as many permanent residents that live in the particular area here. A lot of it's rental, and we have, because of that, a turnover that takes place, that we get super individuals, and over the time I've been here, I've been there, in the last five to six years, I've seen a lot of improvement. I'm going to take you just for a visual overview of the neighborhood. If I could have the first slide. This is as you're entering into the neighborhood. This is right on 500 West. You can see they are currently working on 500 West and putting in asphalt and markers. It's a major improvement, and I think it's going to be helpful. As you head down the corridor, you're heading towards, this is on the north end of the neighborhood, you're heading south towards the interstate, and it does go under the interstate down to Lakeview Drive to get to the airport. The next slide. This is another view, just to give you a better angle. They will be painting here within the next couple of weeks, I think, at least, that's what the plan is. Next slide. This is the State Center. This is right in the middle of the neighborhood. The troop actually meets at this particular building. It is a troop throughout the entire neighborhood, and they come here from a number of different wards, since it's an 11-year-old troop. Next slide. This is part of the development. This is an addition to the Freedom Building by the circular area there. This is building up right now. There hasn't been sufficient parking, so they tore down two structures in order to put in an extension onto the parking lot area, and this should be in by the end of the fall. We've had, one of the wards here within the neighborhood grew from 360 to 650 within this area here, and cars were parked all along the street, and this is an effort to provide some additional parking. Next slide. This is the beginnings of the change within the boulders. They've brought these trailers in, and the pods and others, and they're starting to upgrade the boulders. Go to the next slide. This is one of the buildings. They're completely renovating the kitchens, taking everything out, moving the families to different locations within the boulders, and then they're, right now, in the process, and will be working on the boulders probably for the next year, trying to provide an upgrade. And this goes into millions of dollars. They closed, the organization that purchased the boulders closed in July, and they are, as of this point, working hard to improve the area. Next slide. Just north of the boulders, Gardner and Associates had this earlier, and this is construction of four orplexes, which is also, just on the other side of the far building there is a railroad track. So this is the, an area that's building up right now, and these should be available shortly, two-bedroom apartments, 16 of them. Next slide. Just another view of this area. Go to the next slide. The South Franklin Community Center was, had ribbon cutting about two years ago. This was by, with the help of those within the neighborhood, and many others came to help, but they worked on this, and this is an area, kind of a focal point for a lot of the residents within the Franklin South area. Next slide. A five-acre park is currently nearing completion. They've got fields themselves, there's two soccer fields, and there's a playground area that will be provided here shortly. They have the equipment inbound, and they should have this completed in the next few months, and this will be a big help for all of those within the area. I know I supported a soccer team in the middle of the field, in the boulders, when they didn't have any room, and this will be great for the children of the area. Next slide. You can go through this. This is South Franklin Community Garden, right between 300 West and Freedom Boulevard, 200 West. Next slide. Go through. Many of the individuals are heavily involved here. Next slide. Go on to the next slide. This is a 59-unit construction site. It's actually in the Franklin neighborhood, right next to the Franklin South neighborhood, and is going up. This will be finished by the end of the year, and they expect by December, January, they'll be moving in here. And then, the next slide. This is a view of the startup building across the, by the front-runner, and this area is also, at least sometime in the future, looking to some growth, and this is right on the peripheral of the neighborhood, but it shows a lot of the, and this heavily used, so throughout this whole area, there's a lot of growth, a lot of change, a lot of development. I guess the biggest challenge is the constant transition, where we don't have the individuals that are there constantly and provide the continuity, so you have a lot of turnover. But it's a super area, a lot of good development, a lot of good people, and I think we've got a lot of positive things taking place right now. Thank you.
So I have a question. You live on Fifth West, and it looks like they've gotten ready to stripe a middle turn lane, and I know Dorothy Clark was excited when I went by, she says, "Oh, you're finally getting rid of the on-street parking. It's so dangerous when I go to back out." What's your opinion?
It is. I've had now three individuals call me on that particular issue, that they need to have it striped, because it is dangerous right now, having vehicles pull out into the lanes. They've got it set up, so they're actually pretty close. The way they're going to, they're going to have a turn lane, they'll have two major lanes, north and south, and then there's going to have a bicycle path, and it needs to be striped as soon as possible, to avoid any potential problems in backing out of their driveways there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mertz. We appreciate that great report, and it was a fun visual walk through your neighborhood to see all those improvements. It's great. And we also, a little shout-out to you for being on our Housing Committee. We appreciate your work there in addressing some of the issues that we're seeing, not only in your neighborhood, but throughout the city, so appreciate your work there as well. We'll now look for a motion to approve the minutes of September 20th, 2016 council meeting, unless there are changes that need to be made. Mr. Winterton?
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Harding. Those in favor? Thank you. The voting is unanimous in the affirmative. The public comment segment of this meeting is an opportunity for any person in attendance to comment on matters that do not appear as a public hearing on the items, I mean, I'm sorry, on the agenda. Items not scheduled for public hearing are item number one, number two, and number five. Please begin your comments by stating your name and city of residence. Should you not wish to speak, but instead to have your statement read aloud by the recorder, please provide her with a copy of that statement. The council and administration will not take any formal action on matters that arise during public comment. Those with comments are invited to approach the podium.
I don't know if this is being brought up tonight or not. My husband sent an email to the mayor, and he said something about imposing a grid tax for solar people that have solar rooftops. Is this going to be brought up tonight?
There will be a public hearing for that item. That will be later in the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Margaret Van Hoofen. I live on Grandview Avenue.
Okay. Thank you. Are there other comments?
Charles Cox. I live on Grandview Hill. I reviewed some information that was provided to me regarding this solar fee that's being considered to be placed on residential solar systems. I feel like there's an issue here that they're making a lot, that the council's review of this, which has been done by a board of people that have looked at it, is making quite a few assumptions about the solar industry as a whole.
Can I excuse you, or interrupt you for just a minute? We will be having a public hearing for this item, and love to hear your comments during that time, if that's okay.
When is that?
That will be after, we'll have one item, and then we'll have the solar right after that, so hoping to get to it very quickly, and then would you please come back to the podium and share your comments?
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Point of order, there's a couple items before that.
Oh, I'm sorry. There are two. Yeah, we have some business, and then there'll be, I think it's the second agenda item after our business, so. Thank you. Are there any other comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion and go with our first item of business, which is a resolution consenting to the mayor's appointment of James Miguel as the chief of fire, of the Fire Department for the City of Provo, and this will be presented by Mr. Parker.
Chairman Chair, thank you very much. Members of the council are pleased to introduce James Miguel, who is the mayor's recommended choice as the new fire chief for the City of Provo. Chief Miguel is a career fire service officer. He's been involved in the fire service for over 30 years, has been the fire chief in Modesto, California, and in the Joint Fire Department, which exists between the cities of Livermore and Pleasanton in the Bay Area in California. We're excited to have him here. We've been through a very rigorous process, and had some excellent candidates, and Chief Miguel rose to the top very quickly, and we're excited to have him here. I know he's, he and his wife Susan are here with us tonight, and we'll invite the chief to come to the podium, if you would, and then if there's any questions for members of the council, we'd be happy to entertain that, and otherwise, we look forward to a motion to approve the resolution as drafted.
We appreciate you being here, and love to hear a few words from you.
I would love that. Thank you, Chairman Santiago, and members of the city council. On behalf of my wife, and I, and actually my entire family, we are extremely honored to have been invited here and to have been appointed the chief of the Provo Fire Department. We have deep roots here in Utah County, and as we discussed earlier this evening, my wife was born and raised here, and this move puts us about three hours closer to seven of our grandchildren, and many of our children, and, but what is really exciting about this opportunity is that, for many years, I have come here as someone that was working in California, and looked at the City of Provo as one of the best-run and most patriotic cities that I have ever seen, and this opportunity to come, and the Fire Department's reputation precedes it. They do, they provide a wonderful service, and so the opportunity to come here and to be a part of the Provo Fire Department, be a part of the City of Provo, and to do all I can to support the men and women of this Fire Department is extremely exciting, and if I might, I know that there are many of the members of the Fire Department that have come here tonight in support, and I want them to know how much that means to me, that I've not met most of them, but the fact that they're here to support me, I want them to know how much that means to me and my family, so thank you very much for your confidence in me.
Thank you. And are there any questions from council members? Mr. Sewell?
Welcome aboard, chief.
All right. Yeah, welcome. We will make this official by resolution if someone would like to make that motion.
I would.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
I approve the resolution. That we approve the resolution concerning the mayor's appointment of James Miguel as the chief of the Fire Department of the City of Provo, and I'd like to also congratulate the mayor and Wayne for making such a fine choice. We're excited.
And I believe Mr. Van Buren served on that committee as well, didn't you? Thank you.
Maybe just one comment. I just add my support, that it was, it was a rigorous questioning process, and, but the chief did well, and he was one of my favorites from the very beginning, so thank you for being here.
All right. So we have a motion by Mr. Stewart. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Van Buren, and those in favor? Thank you. The voting is unanimous in the affirmative. Welcome aboard, chief. We appreciate you coming, and you come with an impressive resume, and we're grateful for that. And welcome your wife here tonight, too. It was fun to get to know both of you tonight a little bit better, so. The next item of business is an ordinance enacting Provo City Code, Chapter 6.11, trampoline gyms, to regulate the licensing of trampoline gyms in Provo. In March of this year, I was approached by, well, I received notification from a citizen, Mr. Spencer Merrill, and he had raised some concerns. His son had been injured in a, in an accident at a trampoline gym, and he had raised some concerns, and also heard from Dr. Craig Cook, who is here tonight as well, about some of the concerns with the severity and the number of injuries that were coming from trampoline gyms. And so, after gathering the information from these two individuals, we invited trampoline gym owners from Lowe's Extreme Air Sports, and Mr. Uribe, who has been sort of the representative for that gym. We came to a meeting. We also invited Chief Augustus, who is or was here tonight, because he oversees the paramedics that would respond to some of these accidents at the trampoline gyms. So this group, we got together, and we, along with Ryan Jones, our legal counsel, helped us draft some regulations for these trampoline gyms in Provo, and are hoping at some point that the state will take this further and make it a statewide regulation for these gyms. They were really just self-regulating. Most states don't have rules for these, for these gyms, and felt like some basic regulations would be really helpful, so that gyms don't have to learn by trial and error to achieve a certain level of safety. And I just want to give a shout-out to these individuals, that the process was very, really pleasant, actually, and sometimes when you get competing interests or ideas or coming from different directions, you can have some, some, you know, what's the word? Just a little bit of anxiety there, and there was none. We all, we all were able to work through these regulations. We did use the, Health Department had already drafted some regulations and decided not to put those in place, so we used that sort of as a straw man for our discussions, and were able to build on what they had. We had Patty Cross from the Health Department visit one of our meetings, and she was really surprised at how congenial the meeting was, and not that everybody got their way, that definitely didn't happen. It was definitely a lot of compromise, and a lot of discussion back and forth, and some pushback, back and forth, to make sure that we had something that was really solid. So I would like to invite Dr. Cook. He was the head trauma surgeon at Utah Valley. I would like to have him come. He hasn't been, he wasn't able to make it to our other meetings where we've invited everybody else to discuss this, and, because he had surgeries on Tuesday, but he's cleared his schedule tonight, and then just would love for you to share some of your thoughts about the process, and what you, how you feel about the regulations that we have before us.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Santiago, and I thank the city council for allowing me to take a minute or two. Again, my name's Craig Cook. I'm the trauma medical director at Utah Valley Hospital, and I direct the trauma services there, and I also applaud our city and our county for having such an amazing trauma center amongst us. It saves so many lives and prevents so many major injuries from progressing based on the support of the community, so thank you. I also need to say that I haven't been to a city council meeting for several years, and I was, I was moved by the way the meeting began, so thank you very much for that. With regards to trampoline gyms, we noticed in 2011 that we started seeing some unusual injuries coming from our community that were injuries much more like military-type injuries or injuries from high-speed motor vehicle crashes, but they were coming from trampoline parks, and this was a bit surprising to us. And over the next few years, we saw those numbers increase and the severity of injuries increase, and we saw a number of our youth in our community, many of whom are in their late teens and early twenties, having severe injuries that really were debilitating and life-altering. As a result, we started to try to educate the public with regards to this issue, and we tried to reach out to many different groups, including government agencies, to try to make a difference here. In that educational process and in sharing what we knew, we actually saw a peak of the injuries in the 2013 to 2014 year frame, and after that, we started to see a little bit of a decrease. We didn't see as much of a decrease as we'd like to see, but we did see a bit of a decrease. We brought the matter before the Health Department and had some, some good discussion, some lively discussion at times with regards to certain proposals to try to prevent these injuries as much as possible, and ultimately, we ended up here tonight with the city really looking to see if we could make a difference and make some real inroads in this issue. So this ordinance that's before you really is the culmination, or maybe the start in some ways, of a lot of different discussions between many different individuals and entities, and I applaud all of those entities, including Lowe's especially. They've, they've really been engaged in this discussion, and I personally am very grateful for that. I should make it known that I'm not And I personally am very grateful for that. I should make it known that I'm not representing Intermountain Healthcare here tonight. I'm representing myself and the concerned resident of our community. With that all in mind, this ordinance really does address the major concerns that I personally have and that our trauma service has. I also know that if this ordinance had been in place five or six years ago, which again hindsight is 2020, we would have avoided a lot of undue injury morbidity and some very, very serious accidents. I would love for this to be a foundation for progress in the future. I know this is a city meeting, but ultimately, this is needed in hundreds of cities, if not thousands throughout our country. And we really have not had many states or cities step up, in my opinion, and act with regards to this issue. And I think that this will be a great stepping stone for many other communities, cities, municipalities, if we can move forward with this. And I would hope that our state will also act on this in the near future. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Other questions for Dr. Cook? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our first meeting, we sat down and Dr. Cook and I, and he showed me x-ray after x-ray of, of some of these traumatic injuries. And as a nurse, it really spoke to me. So, I appreciate this, this opportunity to put this legislation before, or these regulations before the council. And grateful for the process. I, I'm not seeing the owners of Lowe's. Are they here? Will you raise your hand if you're here? Okay. They were at our meeting prior where we discussed these regulations a lot more fully. And I just want to give a little shout out to them, too, because they have already put into place these regulations. We haven't passed them yet, but they feel strongly that it will help increase the safety of their, their patrons. And so, just a big shout out to them for, for what they've done in coming to the table and helping us put these together. So, also, I don't know if Spencer Merrill is here tonight. He kind of got the ball rolling. He's a father who's a self-educated expert on the topic because his son was injured in an accident. And he's been a huge driving force behind getting this going, too. And so, just a big shout out to him as well. And so, open it up for discussion amongst council members at this time, Mr. Winterton?
Yes, I was really grateful for the, too often, we think of business versus community. And it's, I struggle with that in our, I think we need to think more like we had experience like this. It's business and community. We can do so many things together. And I am grateful for the collaboration that went on between the two of them. There was not any, we all wanted the same purpose. We all wanted to help prevent injuries. And it was not some, well, you have to do this, and you have to do this, and I can't do this. It was, what can we do to, to reach our end goal? And I hope that this can be an example as we go forward in so many areas. Our community is changing. And I think we need to recognize that we have partnerships that we need to deal with. We are not just individuals. I mean, we look, we're, we need to work together. And I was grateful for the example that happened with this.
Thank you. Are there other comments or questions, Mr. Sewell?
I'd just like to express my appreciation to Chair Santiago for taking this issue and running with it. I was thinking the other day, this was sort of, ended up being an ad hoc committee. We didn't vote on it because we didn't need to, because she's the chair. So, the staff, you know, kind of follows her direction. But I was thinking, we spend a lot of time in committee work. Some, some of our committees have two or three. And we're just time constrained in getting things done. And I think we need to consider more committees where maybe there's only one council member, or maybe only two, you know? In conjunction with staff, with stakeholders, a lot of stuff can get done. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the kind words. So, Mr. Jones, would you like to explain some of the changes that have been made to the document?
Sure, I would. And, and make a comment, too, for the benefit of the public. I know that there was members of the public who watched the work session earlier. And I think there was, my understanding is there was a little bit of concern expressed by some of them about the interaction with Lowe's regarding one of the changes that had been requested. So, I wanted to maybe speak on their behalf and give a little bit of an explanation about that. There's only been one change to the document since the document was posted to the public website last week. And that change was that there was a sentence in that draft that talked about the trampoline gyms keeping an injury log and that log being available for inspection by both city staff and by potential customers. And in the work session earlier today, the council members voted to take the language about allowing that log being available to customers out, so that it's just available to authorized city employees. I just wanted to make clear, for those who were viewing the session earlier, this situation reminds me of the old saying about pathways, those pathways that are paved by good intentions. Because that phrase kind of made its way in there without anybody suggesting it. And that was my fault, so I'm going to take ownership of that. What, what actually happened in the last work session is there was some discussion about posting signs inside the buildings that listed injury rates. And, and it was an idea that was thrown out, but it was never adopted by the council. When I was trying to work on the final version of the ordinance, it occurred to me that some council members who wanted that kind of public acknowledgement of, of the injury rates, might be satisfied by having injury logs open to the public while those members who were opposed to the signage would find that a satisfactory compromise. So, that was an idea entirely of my own making that made its way into the document. So, I just wanted to make sure that the members of the public who were watching the work session understood that, that it was not something that anyone on the council or on the committee had advocated for and that Lowe's was opposed to. Rather, it was a compromise idea that I threw in and, and it was agreed by all the parties to take it out. So, so that's the only change to the regulation since it was posted to the website last week.
Thank you for that. Are there other comments or questions? Or we'll look for a motion, Mr. Connect?
I'd just like to add that we have like nine council priorities this year. And this wasn't really at the beginning of the year on the radar. And I appreciate the fact that despite our heavy workload and the other priorities, that you were able to bring this forward and make it happen.
Thank you. If there are no other comments, we'll look for a motion. Mr. Sewell?
I move to approve the ordinance as written and displayed before us.
Thank you. And this is the, the updated version that's before us right now, right?
I think what's on the screen in front of you is just the text of the ordinance and not the exhibit. But by council action in the work session, the exhibit that this refers to is the one that has the language removed. Can you scroll down to the end, Bryce, and show that change? Yeah. So, there in section, section 6.11.080 is the change that was made during the work session. So, this is the proper exhibit.
Okay. Thank you. So, the motion by Mr. Sewell, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart, any discussion on the motion? Those in favor? Thank you. The voting is unanimous in the affirmative. Thank you. The next item of business is an ordinance amending energy rates. And actually, can I just say thank you first to my colleagues, too? I appreciate this. We started in March on that item. And I just want to say thank you to my colleagues for, for supporting this. And I think it's so good to have the discussions that we had. And I think any, any new ordinance or resolution should go through that vetting. And so, I appreciate Mr. Harding, you know, bringing up the points that you did, even though we didn't end up going, you know, with, with what you had suggested. I appreciate you doing that and that it went through some proper vetting. And I, I think that's always a good thing. So, anyway, I just want to thank my colleagues as well. So, the next item is an ordinance amending energy rates on the Provo City Consolidated Fee Schedule. And this will be presented by Travis Ball, our Energy Director. And while he's coming up, I will mention that this is the solar discussion. It doesn't say solar in the title, but this is the solar discussion, so.
Thank you, Chair and Council. Appreciate this opportunity to present this. This is a recommendation that has come from the Energy Board. It's a, we've been looking at this for over a year. It's a recommendation that comes from a cost of service study completed by Dave Berg. Dave Berg is here. So, if there's any questions, he has to leave soon because he has to catch a plane at 8:30. So, I'll just tell you the recommendation. And if there's any questions, you can ask Dave also. The recommendation is to charge a $3 per KW for the capacity for our solar installation. The Energy Board recommended this capacity charge because of a few reasons. It's easy to implement. It covers the fixed distribution cost of the system. And the other cities in UMPA have also decided to do the same, the same fee. The reason why we're, we're doing this is net metering customers can avoid paying for some of the fixed fees for paying for the grid. We have to maintain the grid, and there's fixed costs for that. If they don't pay for that, other customers have to pick up the difference. There are customers that don't have the opportunity to install solar on, on, for this purpose. Apartments, rentals, homes with HOA covenants, rooftop orientation is wrong, trees. Those customers do not have the opportunity to put solar on. And so, there, there is an issue there. We, with this fee, we still, we'll still end up subsidizing solar. In addition to that federal, you still get the federal tax solar subsidy, along with the Utah Tax Credit. So, we believe $3 per KW is a, is a fair fee to pick up the cost of the, the fixed cost for the distribution system. In order for that solar to work, there, the grid has to be in operation. Is there any questions for me? Or is there any questions for, for Dave Berg?
And can I just interject? Mr. Berg has a plane to catch, right?
Yes.
So, do you want to invite him up while he has a few minutes? Is that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
He's the expert that completed the cost of service.
Okay.
Thank you. Welcome again to all the council members. Happy to be here. I apologize, but I have to leave at 6:00 AM on a long planned vacation with my wife. And I told Travis, if I don't make my plane tonight, he has to cover the divorce attorney. So... The $3 per KW charge, and he mentioned a couple of things relative to that. And one is, I, I think it's important to understand is that there's a well-recognized subsidy that goes basically from non-solar customers to customers who have rooftop solar. And it's, it's really an industry-wide recognized phenomenon. And the $3 per KW or per kilowatt charge that we're recommending, and this is also in the other five UMPA members, they're also looking at implementing the same charge, actually only addresses a portion of the actual subsidy. And that's relative to, as he said, it's really relative to the, sort of the fixed cost around the local distribution system. It doesn't impact some of the subsidy that exists in the customer charge, nor in the wholesale power component, which is the bill from UMPA, which is actually your largest revenue requirement. But I think that it's a reasonable step kind of in the middle. In that, under a current net metering, which you, which you are actually doing now with your customers, there's, sort of the full subsidy exists. And if we went to a different rate design, and as I've mentioned before to council members, if we went to full demand and energy rates for solar customers, that would eliminate the subsidy completely. And so, I think in the, sort of from the perspective of still providing some incentive and recognizing some value of solar, this is just addressing a portion of the subsidy. And I think it's, I think it's somewhat fair to both the solar customers, as well as to the remaining customers who don't have the opportunity for any number of reasons for taking advantage of that. So, and I also think that, you know, the fact that a, a number of other utilities are also looking at, at doing the same thing. And I actually am working for some other Utah municipals who are not within UMPA, who are also, including Murray and Lehigh and Brigham and Payson, who are also considering sort of the same concept of, of doing this. So, I highly recommend this, what I think is a, is a fair kind of middle of the road for addressing this issue.
Other questions for Mr. Berg? Mr. Connect?
So, you mentioned five other cities in UMPA. Can you name them so that the public knows?
The Spanish Fork and Nephi and Levon and Manti and, am I missing? Salem.
Thank you.
Mr. Winterton?
With regards to the cost, the, the cost that we're asking for the, with the $3, it's not, they're not, it's actually less. We are still subsidizing the grid with that $3. Is that correct?
Well, you're subsidizing overall service. What you're really doing is the $3 addresses what I'm going to call the demand-related component of the local distribution system. It doesn't, your, your residential rates, because your customer charge is too low for all of your residential, there's a subsidy there. So, but everybody in the class gets that. The other thing is that the wholesale power component, the demand and energy charges that you pay to UMPA, which is more than 50% of this cost to serve a customer, it doesn't actually address any of the subsidy that exists there, particularly in the demand portion. Because the wrinkle with solar is that they buy very little energy from you, but they still place a demand on the system, which has a cost, both from a local delivery system perspective, as well as a wholesale power perspective. This is really only addressing the local delivery portion of that subsidy.
So, basically, the local delivery would be what I would consider the grid, but it's not addressing the demand, is what you're telling me?
Yes, because the actual, this is $3 per KW. Your wholesale power cost to residential is in the neighborhood of about $5.70 per KW.
And we're not asking, adopting this, we're not asking the solar community to subsidize, give anything more to the system other than what they're using.
Yeah. And another way actually to look at this, too, is that someone who has a solar facility still needs the grid. And so, what a lot of utilities will call this is, is basically like a, a system access or a grid access fee. Now, that they get value from that. Because if they didn't get value from the grid, then they may as well just disconnect from it. And so, what they're doing is, this is a way for them to, to pay for some of the value that they're getting. Because when they overgenerate, when the sun is shining, they export that energy to the grid. And then at night, in effect, it doesn't actually work this way from an engineering perspective. But from an accounting perspective, they get to sort of take those kilowatt-hours back. Some people would say they're using the system as a battery. Well, the system isn't a battery, but, you know, that's sort of one way to think of it.
And we are also doing that with, we're doing the same thing with low-end users in our system. Isn't that, is that correct?
Well, you have what are called inverted rates, so that smaller customers who are using less energy pay a lower rate than higher. I would argue that most utilities that I work with, the reason for inverted rates, yes, a subsidy sort of naturally exists when you have rates like that. But most utilities that have those kind of rates, the reason for doing them is in order to promote conservation. In other words, if you're a, if a high-end user, your rate is higher, so you have more incentive. But then, of course, because if, then there's more incentive than to actually have solar as well, because the first energy that you don't have to buy is the more expensive stuff.
Okay.
Are there other questions? Mr. Connect?
And we're not changing that aspect of it. They're still saving. When they produce solar, they don't have to buy the expensive part if they generate it.
That's correct. Depending upon their size, you know, if they're a larger kind of customer, the first kilowatt-hours that they generate from solar, they get the highest energy rate around 12 cents. And then as they, as they reduce their net purchase, then they get into the 10 cent, and then ultimately the 9 cent. But the first energy that they save is the most expensive energy in the tariff.
And so, that ends up being another way that we kind of subsidize it because we're, we could go out on the open market and maybe get it for how much?
Well, and actually, even your average net wholesale power cost is, is around 8 cents. And you're actually buying it, if you will, for 12.
Thanks.
Are there other questions? Mr. Sewell?
So, since 2009, we've had this net metering program in place that incentivizes rooftop solar. Would it be a fair characterization to say that this proposal sort of dials that incentive back maybe halfway or midway? I mean, is that?
To a certain extent, yes. But see, an interesting thing has happened. When, when net metering was first, let's say, invented, the price of solar was many times higher than it is now. So, very few people did it anyway, because even at... So very few people did it anyway, because even at very high rates, 15 cents, 20 cents, you still couldn't sort of pay for the solar installation. What has happened over time is that, as oftentimes happens with technology, is that the price of solar has come down dramatically and continues to go down. And so the argument sort of that full retail is needed there to provide this incentive starts to, as a cost engineer, I think, starts to dissipate somewhat. And so, you know, ultimately, I think that solar, like anything, needs to sort of stand on its own. And, you know, there's a lot of subsidies that still exist in the tax arena and so on. And I think this is just an opportunity to have them start to contribute then to the grid, because they're not paying, you know, sort of a net of 30 cents a kilowatt hour to have solar, because the costs have come down so much.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Stewart?
Just to kind of make it more simple, we buy power back from our solar customers at retail, right?
Correct.
But we can buy wholesale power at a much cheaper rate, and so that's where the subsidy comes in?
Yeah, and on a simple basis, I'll give you that, sure.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm trying to make it simple.
Okay.
I'm remembering back in 2009, when this, when our net metering situation came into place, I looked at that as an opportunity for an option, not necessarily, it was something to incentivize green power, but it was looked at more as an, so I don't know that we were actually saying, "We want more solar." We were saying, "We want more options," from what I remember. Now, I could be wrong on that. I don't remember the discussion necessarily. I know it was centered around solar, but was it actually giving, just giving our community more option that was more available to them, rather than saying, "We want, we've got to have more solar." I don't, I remember it as an option.
Mr. Connect?
Just one more comment. So we do have extremely low base rates, like $6.50 a month. And so we have chosen over time to pay for the grid and all the infrastructure through, out of the profits from the sales. And so when someone doesn't buy product, they don't support the system. And so therefore, the $3 proposal helps pay for the grid that has to be there for when they need it, which is maybe, you know, 7 o'clock in the evening when there's no solar and they still, like everyone else, need electricity.
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable summation.
You touched on this lightly before, but can you talk about the, why we wouldn't just increase the base rate for all of the low users and solar and?
Well, I've been, I've been doing electric rates for over 30 years, and I'll have to say that the only constant in all of that time is residential fixed customer charges as kind of an issue. And because there's sort of cost basis and there's also policy basis, I have very few customers who are clients whose customer charge is as high as what the cost of service study would say. Because to a certain extent, a lot of the idea is that around particularly elderly customers, low users of energy, some people will equate low usage to low income, which is not necessarily the case. But the idea is trying to keep the fixed charge as low as possible. I oftentimes talk about my mother, who's an almost 90-year-old widow who uses 300 kilowatt-hours a month. And she comes up time and time and time again, relative to trying to sort of watch out for citizens like that, to keep that customer charge as low as possible, which then of course means that energy charges need to be higher in order to generate your revenue. And so, you know, I, there are some utilities who still have a zero customer charge. There's not very many. I'm desperately working with a few to try to get them to raise that. But I know that raising those customer charges is oftentimes a difficult policy issue, so it's not unusual for utilities to choose to keep those a little bit lower. If you were to just raise that, the cost basis would be to double it, would be close to being on a cost basis. Well, of course, all of your very small users would see sort of on a percentage basis a real negative impact on their bills. And then the higher users, because you'd have to lower those energy rates, they would see then a real decrease in their bill. And then certainly the solar would see less of a incentive, if you will, because the energy rates would be lower.
Thank you. Are there other questions for Mr. Berg? Okay, thank you. Have a safe trip back to Minnesota.
I wish I could stay, but as it is, I'm not going to land at home till midnight, so.
Well, we appreciate you being here and taking the day trip to Utah, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We will open up the meeting later for public comment. You might catch him before he walks out. I don't know.
If you don't mind, I would love to take one question before I know if he's got a question that he would like to answer.
Sir, can you approach the microphone and state your name for the record?
In the discussion, there was a reference to, I'm Burnell Stone, to UMPA, the agency from whom we purchase power. And I, there was a reference to fixed costs and avoided distribution costs and a subsidy. And in order to understand that, I'm asking to explain the structure of the UMPA costs in terms of fixed and variable components and also the seasonality.
Yeah. When you buy wholesale power from UMPA, there's two components to the bill, and the bill is on a monthly basis. So they have a rate, and there's two pieces to the rate essentially. There is a demand charge, and that's billed based on the city's maximum demand during the month. And then there's an energy charge, which is associated with the total energy for the month. So on a seasonality basis, what you've really got going is that every month you have to pay the bill based on the usage in that month. So in the summer, when you have more usage, the bill is higher. In the spring, when there's less usage by the community, the bill is lower. The demand component is based on the maximum demand of the city load, which typically occurs in most months after 5:00 PM. So part of the struggle with solar is that after 5:00 PM, even in the summertime, rooftop solar output is at a very low percentage of its maximum capability. Its maximum is generally on 2:00 in the afternoon. So while they're not buying very much energy, and you save all of that energy portion of the cost, if you will, from them, but the demand piece, you still have to pay that. And actually, it's a fairly sizable amount of money relative to the wholesale demand cost from the agency. And even with rooftop solar, very little of the demand charge from UMPA is actually avoided because of when those demands occur. Pardon me?
So the price?
Well, the price structure is what it is. I, well, you have to take that up with the UMPA board. I'm.
Okay, Mr. Wunderton?
As I think about this, that's a different issue to me.
Actually, and actually, what's important about, is that the $3 doesn't have anything to do with?
That's exactly right. That's what I'm saying. It doesn't have anything to do with the UMPA.
Yes. And actually, what happens is the portion of the subsidy that still exists is primarily the portion associated with the wholesale power piece. The $3 is only for, within the community, the distribution, the substations, the primary lines, the transformers at the service drop into the home, the meter set, all of that stuff, which is absolute fixed. Once it's built, it's there. And the $3 is associated with the fixed cost of that system.
And it has nothing to do with the UMPA stuff, so that's, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you taking one more question. So are there other questions for Mr. Ball?
Yes, is there any more questions for me?
Mr. Harding?
Did we determine for Provo if our peak load is at roughly 5:00 to 7:00 PM or if it's during the day, when you take into account both residential as well as commercial industrial users?
For us, because we have such a large residential component of the city, the residential component drives the peak, and so it is after 5:00. So we went and looked to see where those peaks were, and they are after 5:00 for most cases. Every once in a while, like in the winter, you might get a peak like 9:00 in the morning. I remember one year that was 9:00 in the morning, but for the most part, they're after 5:00. 5:00, 5:30, 6:00, 6:30, 7:00.
Are there other questions?
And that's when solar isn't generating?
There's a portion of solar.
Small portion.
Very small portion. And it depends on the system, right? Some, if you're pointing west, would get more in the evening than if they're south.
But they don't do that because they don't get the total?
It probably depends on the orientation of the roof and what seems to be the best for their situation. So I can't say all, I mean, there are a portion that would be that way. I've seen a solar up on Carterville Road that's pointing east, which would be the worst, north and east, right? So.
Are there other questions for Mr. Ball? Okay, thank you. This item is not typically scheduled for a public hearing, but we realize that there is a lot of public interest, so we are going to have a public hearing for this item, and we will invite those who are interested in commenting to come to the podium. Please limit your comments to two minutes, and if your comment has already been made, just be sensitive to the time. If someone else has already made a similar comment, just be sensitive to the time that we do have. I'm sure we're going to have a lot of public comment tonight, which is great, and appreciate you all being here. So just be aware the timer is here on the board. And Mr. Jarvis?
Thank you.
Please introduce yourself.
My name is Don Jarvis. I'm the mayor's sustainability advisor. I'm not speaking for the mayor, but I'm also chair of the mayor's sustainability committee, and I believe I am representing their consensus. I'm also a solar owner. I have 12 panels. It's a very small system, 3 kilowatt-hours. And it is, for Mayor Stewart's information, it is oriented west, southwest. And many, I know many, almost all of the people in my neighborhood are oriented in that same direction, west, southwest. I'm glad we're discussing this issue. There are fixed costs which Provo City Power has to cover, and Provo City Power, I recognize, is too small to absorb the costs of fully subsidizing solar. Furthermore, we have an issue that roughly $10 a month goes from the average customer to support the general fund. It's something like $6 million in tax that reduces the taxes that we have to pay, and it's hidden in the electric bill. We need, we need that revenue. Provo City Power has to pay that revenue, and I think that the solar owners, we are now escaping, sometimes escape that hidden tax. And the 3 kilowatt, $3 per installed kilowatt, is not the worst way to cover the grid and hidden tax. It is more fair for those of us who have small systems. It tends to hit those larger systems worse. And in that sense, it's fair. In other words, Jarvis, it could have been a lot worse. But I do believe we need a thorough public discussion on this, and we've not had it. I know that you and the city council are kind of tired of it, you've been doing it for a long time, but the public has not had the discussion. I recommend that we educate the public, discuss this issue more thoroughly. I recommend at minimum, we do some, consider grandfathering, excusing the first 2 kilowatts of installed solar. Study thoroughly what is going to be the effect of the proposed surcharge on the future of solar, and then lay out a roadmap for how to handle future growth of solar.
Thank you.
My name is Jonathan Hill. I'm a professor at BYU of Biology. I live out in West Provo with a nice south-facing roof, and we are actually currently looking into getting solar right now. And so I just found out about this issue yesterday as we were talking to our solar, potential solar provider. What I think is missing from this discussion is a policy basis. So the gentleman that did the cost basis analysis, he mentioned that beyond the fiscal analysis, it is the responsibility of this council to look at policy as well. And I would like to argue that the policy says that we need to continue our full subsidy of solar. This year is setting up to be the hottest year on record, once again. And in fact, in Provo, we can see the effects of this. In August, we recorded exactly 0.00 inches of rain. We had a hot summer. In fact, over the summer entirely, we only got a quarter inch of rain. We got nothing. We've had algae blooms, we've had environmental impacts. To deny that the environment is not being impacted by our existence here is foolish. On the national level, there is actually an ongoing lawsuit that says that the federal government is negligent because it has not done more to address the climate change that is occurring. On the other hand, some things don't change in Utah. Once again, last winter, we ranked at the bottom for air quality. In fact, it is estimated that the air quality in Utah reduces the life expectancy by two years. And in fact, one red air day is equivalent to smoking a half a pack of cigarettes, and there were 27 of so-and-so such days this year. So what we are not considering here is the benefit that the solar providers provide in the environmental and carbon emission reduction that they do. So for example, I went and looked up what the estimated social and environmental cost of carbon emissions is. It's $40 per ton per the federal government. That comes out to, if you were burning coal, 4 cents per kilowatt-hour. So we are, by installing solar, reducing the environmental cost that is shared among the entire community, not just the solar owners, by 4 cents per kilowatt-hour. That cost was not in the analysis. We also have the air quality benefits. It was much harder to come up with a solid number, but I estimate, based on using those similar numbers, that is an additional 2 cents per kilowatt-hour benefit that solar provides to us. Adding that to the deferred cost of the wholesale rate, and we are near 10 cents per kilowatt-hour, which is what the city is paying by subsidizing solar, by buying it at a retail rate. So it is not that the solar owners are taking all of these benefits for themselves. These benefits are shared among the community, and therefore, to ask the community to help subsidize this cost is not unfair, because they are gaining that benefit. It also should be noted, most of the discussion tonight has centered around this idea that solar people just benefit from the free energy. But what we are actually doing is transferring our costs to an equipment cost over a retail power cost. In fact, in my estimated system, the benefit that I will gain over the next 12 years on my system is about $10, and it goes negative if this fee passes.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
So all I am doing is saying, I'm voting with my dollars and setting up and saying, "I want solar." I am not gaining financially from this. So it's not like I'm taking from other people. I'm just switching the source and creating a benefit for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. If the, sorry, if the audience will please refrain from clapping and maintain the decorum of the meeting, we appreciate it. Thank you.
My name is Marcus Daly. I live on Oak Lane. I actually live here in Provo, but work in New York City for a Fortune 500 company. I have 1,600 employees and I manage a budget much larger than Provo City's budget. I mention those things only because I want you to know that I have respect for the needs of employees, customers, and how to manage a budget. Now, I worry that what's being put in place here is not friendly to technologists, to technology. I actually am the CTO for this firm. And when I think about places where we might open an office, we do this quite frequently, look at offices outside of New York City to open, I want to go to places where it's technology-friendly. Unfortunately, with this type of energy policy or technology policy, it does not encourage me to want to open an office in Provo and have my employees work here when it's anti-solar. By the way, solar is not all about environmental. I know a number of my colleagues here would say that it is about, you know, the environment. But in fact, it's about also technology and having technology be a part of an extension of my ability to exercise my free agency. I didn't want to just come here and complain. I actually produced an alternative proposal. I went through all of Dave Berg's documents, his study, plus everything you published. And there are two slides there with an alternative proposal. You can't implement both, sorry, you can't implement the first one and not implement the second without it being complete, so, okay? This is a future vision for how to implement solar in Provo City, and it is technology-friendly, okay? The first, the second slide in there is a minimum bill provision for solar customers. Now, it's not what Dave was suggesting in his PowerPoint about a minimum bill provision. This is in fact the inverse of what you're proposing today. Today, you are punishing users who install solar panels. You're punishing them by actually, every additional panel I add, I'm now going to be paying a tariff. You're punishing them by actually, any, every additional panel I add, I'm now going to be paying a tariff. What I am proposing is that you establish an average customer use. And then, if a solar customer drops below that average customer use, they then incur the access charge. It's consumptive base. It's consume, it's about consuming energy as opposed to just imposing a tariff. As a customer, I have 11, I have an 11-kilowatt system. What you're proposing today would increase my cost by $400. I already pay into the system more than most folks in this room. I pay today for 1,533 kilowatt hours per month, on average, with my system. I already pay for my fixed costs. So, what you're proposing is not fair. I know I'm out of time, but I just wanted to mention the second part of this. I apologize. The second part is the real fix. If you look through Dave's proposals, he talks about something called load factor, right? And that, in fact, the load factor is the largest increase or the largest reason for the costs in the system. It's the major, major cause. Load factor metering does require a smart meter. But as a technologist, I'm happy to pay for a smart meter. Now, by installing a smart meter, you can actually monitor when, when we were talking about earlier, at that seven o'clock peak, when people are consuming, you can actually identify who, as a solar customer, is in fact impacting that peak. And then, you can impose a tariff for that. By the way, that encourages, install as many solar panels as you want. Plus, if you're going to be installing solar panels, make sure you install batteries, which are also renewable, to compensate for that load factor between, you know, say roughly 7:00 PM and 11:00 PM. And then, if your batteries run out, pull off of the grid. I would, I know I'm out of time. I would strongly recommend, please consider this proposal. It is technology-friendly. It encourages somebody like me to live here, let alone build an office here and bring my employees here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daley.
Good evening, council members. My name is Justin Miller. I am a PhD student at BYU right now, working on my degree in bioinformatics. My wife and I are homeowners, and we recently purchased solar. And as we were going through the purchasing of solar, we were looking at the batteries that are on the market right now to determine whether or not it was cost-efficient to put in a battery to go completely off the grid. As of right now, it is not completely cost-efficient. Most, the batteries we were looking at were Tesla's new Powerwall battery, which stores 10 kilowatt hours and costs $3,500. However, if the council members were to vote to approve this bill, then the cost of solar would make it so that it would be cost-efficient to go completely off the grid. Now, if we were to go off the grid, then we wouldn't be contributing back the energy which we already have, the net metering, the going negative. We wouldn't be paying the $12 tax and fees that we currently are paying. And the grid would still need the maintenance, which it needs. And so, that revenue would have to be produced some other way. And I ask that you consider that as you are considering voting on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Good evening. My name is Fred Cook, and I live in Orem. But as Mrs. Santiago knows, she knows my family that lives here in Provo. I have grandchildren that go to school here, both at the university and in the elementary school. And I, I'm not representing Legend Solar, but I am an independent contractor with that company. And I have to share with you that as I go out and I talk to people about solar, I have not once heard anyone say to me, "It's unfair to us to not have solar on our home, on our roof because we're subsidizing those that are buying solar." And we've heard a great deal about that from the others that have preceded me. And this $3 amount of kilo, per kilo, for a per kilowatt hour, on an average system in Provo now, and I understand there's only about 160 homes or so that have solar in the city of Provo. The average system would cost that person, that family, about $250 a year with that, with that $3 cost. And to me, that is definitely an unfair approach to trying to solve a problem. Solar is now, and it is the future. And what will happen as we go along, you're going to see more and more of this taking place with people looking at solar because we know where it comes from. And we know the, the benefits of solar versus the problems that we have with the coal generation and other things of that nature. It is here. It's going to stay. It's going to continue to grow. And it's growing at a, a very rapid rate here in the state of Utah. And my feeling is that if the city of Provo, as the gentleman has said before me, want to continue to be a progressive city like you are, you're well thought of around the country. And rather than take this approach to penalize those that have solar, find ways to incorporate them into your thinking. We saw some slides appear about the, the ongoing construction that's taking place in cities like Provo. One project, I think it was over 50 units that are coming in. They're not going to have solar there because it's not, it's not feasible to put it on to apartments, buildings, or it's not feasible to put it into condominiums because of the way the construction is done. These people are going to be still customers of the power company. But to me, the greatest thing is, is the unfairness that takes place when you, you charge someone who's trying to better their life to be able to look forward to, like, instead of, instead of renting a home, buying a home. So, instead of renting a power company, power, they're, they're looking at it and saying, "I want to, I want to buy it. I want to own it." And when you put this, this extra on there, it may not seem like too much at $3 per kilowatt. But when you start talking about six, seven, or eight kilowatt averages that go on most of these homes, you can see that it does add up. And for the family that has four, or five, or six children, that $250 or $300 extra per year can go a long way toward expenses that they don't now have to incur. So, it's my hope that the council will consider all the things that have been presented to you this evening and understand that it is a cost that's being borne. But as the gentleman said before us, it's a shared cost. And we are going to see more and more of this solar taking place. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
My name is Tyler Augerberg. I am a resident of the city of Provo, live up in the, up near Seven Peaks. And I am also a, a solar owner. I probably got a little excessive. My house, my roof was kind of large. And I installed 53 panels with a 15-kilowatt system. And there's only two of us that live in the home, except when all the kids and grandkids are there. So, I'm one of the contributors to the grid. I have never gone over the solar that I've, even in the summer, that I have provided back into the grid. I think, as it has been mentioned before, one of the things that we've got to consider is how do we feel about clean renewable energy? I picked one of these up outside. It's sponsored by the city of Provo. And it talks about renewed choice in the clean, sustainable, renewable energy. And I think that's one of the things that we've got to look at as citizens of this community and Utah County. I work in Lehigh. My wife drives an electric car to Salt Lake and back each day. That is supplied by the solar energy. And I just feel that these charges are coming back to bite us who have invested in this clean energy system. Now, I fully support Provo Power and Provo Energy. I think they had a great install team. I didn't balk at the $1,000 that I had to pay in, in fees and so forth to install the system to the city. I think that was perfectly fair. And I also think that, you know, there is an amount that we must pay each month to be on the grid. But when you look at the various fees that have been proposed, and only a couple of those were brought up tonight, but the others would amount to, to me, to be roughly $120 a month. And I think that is just beyond the incentive that we need to get people to go with solar. Yes, there are other alternatives to it, and they should be incentivized as well. We just don't live in, in Spanish Fork Canyon where we have 60 mile an hour winds most of the time. Thank goodness. So, I think here in Provo, we need to seriously look at this before we put these fees on and de-incentivize solar power. We can't afford to do that. We need to clean our air. And if we don't look at this now, it's going to be our grandchildren's problem later. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is, oh, my name is Nancy Evanson. I'm an architect. I've lived in Provo since 1970. The, the quality of my voice is a matter of pulmonary issues and respiratory issues that have come to the fore in the last couple of years. I would like to make two points. One is that as a, as a solar customer with 20 solar panels, I have, I consider myself a partner with Provo Power. I have a $20,000 investment. And what I give to, to Provo Power is the opportunity cost every single year of that $20,000 investment, which helps to get us onto a better and green. This is the steroids that I'm taking, talking. A better, green setup for, for all of us, for, for, for clean, decent air. I'm also the woman who last Wednesday sold the house that I have lived in for 20 years, that I designed. Love that house. But on the advice of my pulmonologist, we are moving to Oregon. Because it's either continuing the way I have the last couple of years with bronchitis and pneumonia over and over again, or continue taking steroids over and over again. We're on the cusp of a real crisis here in, here in Provo and in Utah County. And if we don't get ahead of that crisis, if we don't take a look at it and respond to it timely, we're going to lose more people like me. And you don't want to think that as I tell people that I am moving, that they say, "Oh, no, we don't have an air problem in Utah." Almost a good 90% of the people that I talk to come back with, "Oh, yes, I have this," or "I have that," or "My child has this," or "My mother has that." And we need to be paying attention. I'm sorry that I won't be around to help bring that about. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans.
My name is Bart Robbins. I'm a resident of Provo and also a business owner. And I wanted to, to come in because there's a couple of issues that I don't think were addressed specifically when we covered the report as, as published online. The, the only solution that was discussed and questions were asked about from any of the council members was regarding the one, the one issue about the per kilowatt hour charge. There were four other solutions proposed in that report, none of which were discussed in this council meeting. And I was very disappointed to hear that no one would ask about him, especially since I can't ask the question now that he's gone. The other issue that I want to add is in regards to net metering and the way that net metering is set up here in Provo. And that is that if I were to provide solar power more than the power that I used at the end of the year, in other words, if I had more credits than I had been charged, in some other counties and some other systems, I would be paid money back because I had added more to the grid than I had received. Yet, in Provo, that is not the case. At the end of the year, if the reckoning comes and I have more credits, then I don't gain any benefits. And I don't necessarily see a problem with that because I think that that is where I have provided energy that can pay for the costs of these fixed costs. And so, I would propose, if you're going to put in this, this, this new, this new tax there, then you bring us the ability to make more money off of these net meterings. Because what you're doing right now is you have, as was mentioned, a two-house, two-person household with a huge system that you're charging an extra fee. They are not making near what they could be based on the energy that they're using. And I think that that's an issue that has not been brought up and should be discussed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins.
My name is Trina Miller, and my husband Cory and I live on Briar Avenue. I have two one-page submissions, which I will give hard copies. And one is for me, one is for my husband. Dear Provo City Council, as a brand-new residential solar owner, I am very concerned about the proposal to raise fees, taxes on residential solar installations. I do not want to see any increased fees. Please study more deeply. Provo has the slogan, "Welcome Home." In the five years that we have owned our home, I have felt welcome here. Anti-solar is not welcoming. The Provo City website dropdown, "About Us," lists quality of life, innovation, exceptional people, and Provo rankings. All categories show the pride we have in our city and further brag about being number-two greatest place to live in America and number-three best city for tech. Anti-solar is anti-future, anti-innovation, and definitely anti-tech. Anti-solar is also clearly anti-quality of life. Solar benefits. Solar power is clean power. Clean power is clean air, better health, and clear skies. When we moved to Provo, I was appalled at the dirty, toxic winter inversions. I was horrified at the documented health hazards. Clearly, future energy independence for our community, state, and country has many health and financial benefits. Obviously, Provo, Provo Power, and state and federal agencies agree. There are financial benefits for removing old energy-guzzling appliances and replacing them with newer, energy-efficient models. My solar installation is an extension of that idea. My home has become a whole lot more efficient. I am no longer asking for pollution-generating power plants to light my home and in so doing, make my air dangerous to breathe. As someone who has suffered from breathing difficulties, clean air is a major concern. Not only do I want my air cleaner and safer, I want it to be better for my children, grandchildren, and any other posterity we may be blessed with. Incidentally, that will benefit everyone else's posterity too. To install our system, our installer had to pay for and obtain permits, inspections, and pay fees, all of which were specified by Provo City codes. We knew the costs and paid them. We pay ongoing line charges, as we should. We will pay for any power in excess of what we produce, as we should. We will forfeit any excess power we might produce as part of our contract with Provo Power. Is that fair? Maybe, maybe not, but we accept it as part of our contract. As such, any overages are a benefit to the city. In addition to Energy Star appliance conversion offers, Provo Power offers to sell green power from wind farms and other sources to customers. I have taken that invitation another step and funded my own green power generation. I simply fail to see that I have not dealt fairly with the city of Provo and my fellow citizens. Our system was funded by part of my inheritance from my deceased father, for the benefit of me, my children, and grandchildren. Through cleaner air, it will benefit all the children of Provo and Utah County. I ask you to support the future of our beautiful valley. Please carefully consider all the ramifications of adding additional fees and taxes to solar citizens. Please be the forward-looking, innovative, and welcoming civil servants portrayed by the city website. Please give this important subject additional research and support solar.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Would you like to leave that with us, with the recorder?
I will, I will leave the hard copies. May I read my husband's comment as well, or shall I circle the?
Leave it with the recorder, if you would, and then we can, we can see both copies. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Justin Koopmans. I've lived in Provo for about four years, just graduated from BYU. As you can see from my shirt, I work for Legend Solar. I don't represent them, but- I don't represent them, but obviously, I'm interested in what was proposed tonight. Just a couple of things. Obviously, what was proposed tonight definitely covers the cost basis, like Mr. Berg said. But from a policy basis, I think that this proposal is a little bit off, just based on Provo's Vision 2030, which states that part of your goal that's laid out in that vision is to reduce the adverse impacts of growth, development, and environmental pollution and encourage resource preservation through greater participation in recycling and energy conservation efforts. Not only that, it also goes against Utah's, as a state, their goal that's outlined in Bill SB 202, to, by the year 2025, to have renewables account for 20% of adjusted retail electric sales. And so, just with that in mind, I think that this proposal goes against those policies just because it obviously is anti-solar and it does not incentivize people to go solar. From an economic standpoint, solar is obviously exploding in Utah. Legend Solar, the company I work for, was just announced as the 29th fastest-growing company in the nation as part of INC 500, and several other solar companies fall in there as well. This proposal is similar to something that Nevada, the whole state of Nevada, implemented at the beginning of this year, which increased the charges for solar customers about three times. I know I'm out of time, almost done. And this charge for solar customers here in Provo, depending on the size of the system, I just spoke to a gentleman who said that it would increase his cost to $700 a year, whereas his current costs are about, you know, 75 based on the current base rate. So that's 10 times more what it would be. In Nevada, what happened, shortly after the new rate took effect in January 1st, Solar City, Sunrun, and Vivint all announced they would cease operations in the state, and local installers were forced to cut staff. And so from an economic standpoint, I think it would also be beneficial to not move forward with this proposal and look something different. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you left your notes up here, somebody.
I live in the city of Provo, and I am not a solar panel owner, and I live in an HOA and probably because of that, won't ever be a solar panel owner. But I think that it's important that we look at this from a different perspective than I've heard most of the discussion this evening. I've prepared a little handout that I'd like to go over four or five points really quickly. And the handout's based on this piece of information. You probably all recognize it. It's the utility bill that we send out every month. I looked at my utility bill, and I compared our charge for electricity to the charge of Rocky Mountain Power, which provides power in Orem, which is a commercially privately-owned or publicly-owned as opposed to municipally-owned utility. And our rates are very, very similar. If you'll look at the chart, you'll notice that on Tier 1, they're almost identical. They're slightly higher on Tier 2 and Tier 3 for the Rocky Mountain Power during the summertime. However, in the wintertime, they charge only a Tier 2, which is less than we charge. I've heard people talking that our cost of power is eight cents per kilowatt hour. We're only charging eight cents on our Tier 1. If that's the case, we're terrible business people. I don't understand how we can generate $10 million of surplus capital to give back to the general fund if things are as bleak as you guys are talking about. When I compared my utility bill on an annual basis versus what I would pay if I lived in Orem, in the winter, I would pay $104 more for power all winter long. In the summer, I would pay $12 more. Or maybe I got that backwards. I got it backwards. So $116 would be my increased cost by living there where a company works for profit. If I put in solar panels and you charged me very quickly an opportunity cost to be connected to the grid here in Provo, and it was $250 or $300 a year, that would totally disappear, which seems ridiculous as a viability for this process ongoing. I understand that when I talked to Dave Harding yesterday at the lunch meeting, he talked about if I have a subdivision and I put up a little transformer, and I assume that that's going to service seven houses, and two go to solar and opt out or have reduced, that we don't cover our costs. Well, the cost of putting up that is a cost of doing business. And you're asking the citizens of this municipality to cover your cost of doing business. I don't think that's reasonable. I think the entity that takes the risk of creating the business opportunity here has to take some of those risks. Municipal power in this city is a monopoly. I cannot opt out and go to Rocky Mountain Power. You have an obligation, I think, that comes back to us as citizens when you're a monopoly. Now, in the past, we tried to do a, what was that, fiber optic system as an entity? And it's costing me $5.53 a month on my utility bill, for which I get bupkis, because as a municipality, we tried to do that. Don't keep looking up there, Kim.
I'm just reminding you without saying anything that the timer has expired a minute and a half, and I'm trying to do it politely for everybody.
Everybody else went long, and so I'm going to go long, and you didn't interrupt them.
Well, and we do need to be respectful of those who are standing in line behind you as well.
I will be. I won't insult a single one.
And be respectful of the timer. We will descend public comments, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you. So we're paying for that fiber optic program right now. It seems to be working a lot better now that it's in a Google situation and private industry. Economic and political stability result from the ability of our citizenry to rely on laws and ordinances passed. For example, we have an ordinance that was passed in 2009 relative to solar energy and net metering. We're now looking at reversing that. This past year, the United States government made two major changes that relate to Social Security that George and I understand, and estate tax changes. Neither one of those were detrimental retroactively. I think you need to consider that we have a standard operating policy in this country not to make things appear negative retroactively. Also, I think you need to change your paradigm so that the power you're getting back is like me buying a suit from a local businessperson and then taking it back, and so I should get a full refund of what I'm returning. It's not like I'm out of competing business doing that. And so I think those are my comments. You need to look at your bill and see the effect it would have. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you.
Well, Kim, you're welcome. Would you like me to come up and shake your hand?
No.
I'm the only one you've done that to, and frankly, I'm offended. I think it's totally inappropriate.
That I've done one too.
But you've interrupted and stopped and...
Not true.
Who else did you do it to?
I have, but let's get on with the public comment.
Oh, I'm doing it now because you interrupted me on purpose, so I'm...
Mike.
Mr. Roan, you need to maintain the decorum of the meeting.
Let's let the public hearing go on, please.
In the context of the question, I introduce myself. Burnell Stone, Provo resident, live on Windsor Drive. I moved up there from the river bottoms to get out of pollution. The biggest electricity expense I have personally is my four HEPA filters that I run. So the environmental cost is significant. What I want to address, though, is the issue of the fixed costs. And there is a real fixed cost associated with the distribution system, and it needs to be covered. When I looked at the profitability statement, we're making about $10 million. And a large fraction of that $10 million is, in fact, the fixed cost. And solar users are also paying fixed costs. So the question is, do they need to pay an additional amount because they're using less power? I'm preparing testimony for the legislative hearing on the 19th on this issue and solar overall. And Rocky Mountain Power looks very much like our purchaser, and they have a two-tier rate, as was just mentioned, and the spread is more than five cents. And so if we really believe that that peak load is incorporated in the rates that we're effectively paying of five cents, then the solar users, to the extent that they're reducing their total demand, are saving charges across the system. And I've calculated it for Rocky Mountain Power, and that's for the average user, somebody who has a 4,000-square-foot home. That's a de facto subsidy by a full solar user, one who fully installs enough solar, that they are not a net user of the system. That is, their credits offset their generation, is worth $15 a month. So the study we had only looks at the distribution costs and not all-in costs. We probably have a billing problem, but the essence of the billing problem is we're not reflecting the fixed cost. If we looked at all costs and the billing costs, we should probably be subsidizing solar users and, in terms of net metering, encouraging them to have storage. Because if they had storage, as you do in California, you would effectively be smoothing and cutting our total costs substantially. So we've got it misdesigned, and I would like to argue that we need to step back and look at the problem from the point of view of all-in costs and long-run planning. And I don't think that's been done in the report I read.
Thank you, Mr. Stone.
My name is Darren Hanson. I'm a resident of North Provo and own a residential solar energy system. I watched the work meeting today, and I endorse the proposal that Dr. Walters made. Mr. Berg is not wrong. As an engineer, I appreciate his arguments, but he is also selling you a 20th-century public energy system. Provo has, in every other area, a reputation for being innovative and forward-looking. Let's not fall down on this one. Three years ago, I made a private investment in Provo and a sustainable energy future. I invite you to join me and the small but growing number of sustainable energy pioneers by committing, as a city, to welcome small energy entrepreneurs and match their investments in sound and healthy energy futures. I realize what I suggest will take courage and that it is politically safer to take the classic cop-out of cowardly bureaucrats and politicians, bully a minority, and hope the majority won't notice. I believe we're better than that. The city has shown prudence and leadership in areas like the Transportation Fund. Please do the same for sustainable energy and begin by voting no on this ordinance. Thank you.
My name is Ryan Peterson. I live up in the Carterville area. I'm a resident of Provo. Even though I have Legend Solar on my chest, I would prefer to represent kind of my age group as we look at Provo. And there's 40,000 of me that come through BYU every single year. By the way, Legend Solar just agreed on a deal of putting 2,400 solar panels on BYU's campus, which is, to my understanding, Provo Power's biggest customer, is Brigham and After four years at BYU, I went down to Arizona. I had a chance to work for a solar company down there, and then there was a monopoly utility company that essentially forced us out. It was very unfair. And two years ago, I came back up here, and I've worked with Legend Solar ever since. It's been great. I love living in Utah. I'm from Sevier County, came here to Provo for college, fell in love with the city. I plan on setting my roots here. I'd love to set my roots here. I represent the working youth looking for good jobs here in Provo. And I think that policies like this, not just directed towards solar, but any sort of policy that would be predatory towards some sort of industry, as I see this, doesn't really motivate us, 40,000 students coming through BYU every year, to stay and look for jobs here. Google's a very innovative company, for example. They saw that in Provo. I would really, really love it if we could continue to keep that view here in Provo of being a forward-thinking community. And I take pride in Provo being that, and I would love to set my roots here and continue to build my future here. So I consider you guys to reconsider.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Hi, Melissa Kendall. I'm the Wasatch Neighborhood Chair. I'm speaking as a citizen today, and I am a solar customer. I have a couple of things. One is that I believe when we talk about subsidizing, I think the problem that exists is that we're not just subsidizing solar users, we're subsidizing any low users. So the way the fee schedule is set up, you depend upon usage in order to recover costs and things for the grid. And I think if you could rethink that and make it equitable across the board, that would be a better approach. At least, I would ask that you consider that you grandfather in those who have made the investment based on rules, based on the way an agreement was made. And grandfather those people in as you take the time to develop a plan that will be forward enough-looking so that you don't undermine the industry and also that you get the right system put in place where you can recover your costs and realize that you're also subsidizing low users. So that means people who go on missions, for example, people who go on extended vacations, single people who have very low usage, all of those people are subsidized in the same way that solar users are. Because I use, I just use at a low rate. Also, I agree with the small rate increase now in order to recover costs that may be perceived or occur that goes across the board while you take the time to develop a good plan that would be equitable to all users. And you do have time on your side because you only have 160 solar users at this point, and you have 37,000 customers. So I think you've got time to be able to get this right and make sure that you don't undermine the business and the clean energy, but that you also make it fair and cover your costs. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kendall.
Bonnie Morrow, North Tempeu Neighborhood Chair, speaking tonight as a citizen in Provo. Although I did talk to the neighbors, and they are pro-solar, I will put that out there, but that's another discussion. Speaking solely as a citizen, I was on the Vision 2030 Committee with Dave Connect, and we spent a lot of time on that. And in that, what came up was solar and bike. And this was years ago when we first set up the vision, and that was implemented, and now we're on to a new vision in Provo. But based on that, I had a dream of getting solar on my house against my husband's will and also of driving a Prius. I got the Prius first, and then I was able to put solar on my house, and I was very proud of it. And I got committed to that in Provo Vision 2030, when we had guest speakers coming in and speaking to us about renewable energy. And that was, opened my eyes, and that was a long time ago. One thing that I don't think has fully been brought out is that net metering is required. You can't go off the grid. A couple of people have suggested, "Well, I'm just going to go off the grid." You can't, not in Provo. You have to have net metering. You cannot be off the grid. So that means if you have a generator or battery, you can't use them. It has to go back onto the Provo's grid, okay? And you have to sign a contract to that. Also, in January, not in July, but in January, the biggest disadvantage to solar owners in January is when Provo Power seizes any excess energy that you produce during the year. They don't seize it in July, they seize it in January. And so my husband can tell you how much they seized, and it was a lot. And so we need to understand, when we're saying we're not paying our fair share, well, yes, we are, because we were not credited for all that excess energy that's been used by Provo City, okay? And we weren't reimbursed for it. The next thing I'd like to point out is, I went to Provo City Building Permit Office, and they were extremely nice to me, and I told them what I wanted to do, and they recommended people that I should go to to get my solar set up, and I really appreciate that, and they have been absolutely wonderful. They helped us set up... They helped us set up the net metering, they let us know it's going to cost a whole lot more. I said, "That's fine, I'll pay that upfront cost," because I believe in Provo. I believe in clean air. I do not like the inversion in January. I believe in the future of Provo, Vision 2030 and on. And so, I said, "Fine, we'll pay it." And Provo was extremely kind and helpful in helping us get that set up correctly. So to say that solar doesn't stand on its own, which was mentioned, is not true, especially if you've got excess panels. And I know my time is up, but the last thing I want to point out, which is very critical, is if this passes tonight, it will affect the resale value of homes in Provo with solar, because you will have to tell the next buyer, "By the way, you're going to pay an excess fee that is fluid, it's not going to stay at 26 or whatever, it's not going to stay at that. It will be fluid, the next council will come in, they'll vote to raise it, and it will affect the resale value of your home." Think about if you were going to buy a home in Provo City if this passed, would you buy it with solar panels on it, knowing that this was a possibility in your financial planning? Thank you very much for your consideration. I appreciate all that you guys do.
Thank you, Ms. Morrow.
Brian Morrow, I live in Provo, been a 30-year resident here. That was my wife. It might just be interesting for you to know that a couple of years ago, when we built our new home, my wife came to me and she said, "I really want to put solar panels on my house, on our new house." And then so, I'm kind of a numbers guy, so I went and ran the numbers, and I went back to her, and I said, "You know, it's not really financially beneficial. Basically, all we're doing is prepaying the power for the next 15 to 20 years before we recoup our money." I said, "It's not a financial advantage to us to be able to do it." And so, I was kind of against it, because, you know, I didn't really see the advantage to it, other than that there's an environmental aspect to this, is it's more of a forward-thinking. I thought it would be, I thought it would also help the resale of our home in the future. And so, I agreed to it, and we paid $26,000 for 26 panels for it. And what happened, what I didn't realize is that when we did it, is that we oversized it. So we actually produced more power than we actually used. And I didn't really realize it in the beginning, is that any excess power that I produced, the city gets to keep. And so, last year, I had, I think that it's in March is when that it does, that our credit leaves, I had about a $250 credit last year that the city got for free. So I produced $250 worth of power last year that I didn't get any compensation for, because of the investment that I had. Just one other issue is that I'm kind of in a unique position, is I'm a residential user as well as a business user. I own a company that's an industrial user here in Provo. And I remember having the conversation with the power about 10 years ago, when we built our new building down there, and we kept getting these demand charges. And so, I had the discussion with the Provo Power, and they said, "Well, that's because you're putting a demand upon the grid." So what they do is that they take my maximum peak of whatever I'm using at that particular time, and they say, "You got this demand charge." And I said, "Well, how can I reduce that?" And they said, "Well, why don't you run your business at night rather than during the day, or in the evening time, because the rates are cheaper and the demand is less?" But then the gentleman who was here earlier today, he said just exactly the opposite. He said, "Well, if you're a residential user, use your power during the day and not at night, because that's where the peak is." It just doesn't make sense. I mean, Provo City Power has been telling me two different things, because I'm a two different type of a user on it. And so, by putting in solar power, I've decreased the demand on the city. So the same argument that the power company was telling me was that I was increasing the demand for my commercial business, is the same argument that I use back to you. Now, my last point is this, is that don't forget as a city council of who you represent. You represent the people here in Provo. You don't represent the power company of the city of Provo. You represent the people. And if you look, and for the last hour, who's been standing here, right? Who's been standing here? It's been the people who have a desire to have solar power in Provo City. Where's everybody else? In your study, did you do a poll of the city of those who would be in favor of solar power? No poll was probably taken, but I'm saying tonight is a representation of a poll of what the people feel. Has there been anybody in the public who is not oriented or has a vested interest in Provo City Power? Is there anybody who's come up and spoke tonight? No, there hasn't. Not that I'm aware of. I don't know about these individuals behind me. But you represent the people here. There are some indirect benefits to solar power that you can't quantify. And so, what I'm saying is that you represent the people, represent the people, and I think that the people have spoken tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Morrow.
Thank you. My name is Galen Smith. I have solar panels on my house. I'm really amazed at some of what I've heard tonight, because I've, up until this point, felt like solar power was really something that was good for everybody. Particularly, it should be great for Provo. I put my panels in a number of years ago, before net metering. That was very expensive, and in reality, it'll probably never pay for itself. I did it because I wanted to help clean the air in Provo, and I wanted to reduce the huge utility bills I had during the summer when my air conditioning was on. And I'm sorry, but my panels don't quit at 5:00. They keep working as long as the sun's out. I'm not a scientist, but I can look at my meter, I see which way it's spinning. As long as the sun's out, I make more power than I need most of the time. If you look at my meter over the number of years I've had it, I have pushed power into the system. I still occasionally pay utility bills, because I think my credits get taken in the winter. I haven't paid that much attention. But in the winter, I'll usually have one or two bills that I have to pay. But I have given power to the city the whole time. And the maximum demand for the city is during the summer, when it's hot, when the sun's out, when everybody's air conditioning is running, and that's when my solar panels are producing. And I'm spinning that meter backwards. I'm running my air conditioner, and I'm helping the people in the neighborhood, some of them run theirs. So I don't see any ray in the world why I should have to pay to be able to do that, because I'm already adding to the system, and I'm helping, as far as I can tell, with the air quality, because I don't use that other type of power. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Galen. My name's Chris Collard. I am a Provo resident. I'm also a solar customer. I'm also a solar business owner here in Provo. I have employees based out of Provo, our office is in Provo, our warehouse is in Provo. I graduated from BYU, so I'm very much a fan of Provo City. And I thank some of the clients who have been here and helped voice our opinion on the matter. Last year, our average system size was 7.8 kilowatts. At the current fee that you're proposing, that's about $20 a month. That's not accounting for the already, you know, set meter fee that everyone pays. However, our average system in Provo is over just 10 kilowatts, so it's more like $30 a month with that current fee structure. Of the 160-plus, I've heard different things from the net metering department, that they have more like 300 solar customers, and they're going to cap it at 1%, which apparently hasn't happened yet. But with that fee, we're talking a total loss of revenue of $3,600 a month. It's not a ton of money for the large corporation, right, known as the power company. However, I also realize net metering is extremely complicated, and if every single person in the community had solar power, we'd be having some serious problems. I don't think that'll ever happen with BYU and all the multi-housing that we have in the community, but I realize that does pose complications on the engineering side. I guess my biggest concern is a hard fee like this sets a bad precedent. Across the state, some of the guys from a good company, Legend, they talked about what happened with Vegas. Over 2,000 people lost their job overnight when the utility decided to, you know, impose that fee. Solar's a booming market, there's a lot of people in the industry right now, provides a lot of people with a good source of income, and I hate to see that happen in Provo. And I do have, I guess, one potential suggestion in that in Texas and some of the other states where they're deregulated, you have the opportunity to purchase power from whatever source you want. My brother lived in Dallas, Texas, and he was, at the time, in a townhome, but he was like, "Hey, I would love to buy wind power," because they gave him 14 options of different companies he could buy from. So guess what? He paid a higher rate to purchase power from energy generated from wind turbines. Like some of my clients have mentioned, you know, they have a loss of energy at the end of the year. Maybe that's a potential opportunity to allow maybe BYU students who can't buy green energy because they're in a townhome or a big apartment complex, that they could be purchasing those excess solar credits. So just my two cents. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Collard.
Beth Alligood, I live on the West Side, and I will try to go quickly. Listening to the discussions over the past couple of weeks and listening to the presentations and everything, what I feel it boils down to, and what a lot of people feel it boils down to, is money. How much does the city get to pay for the infrastructure? You're picking at solar customers because solar customers is a low-hanging fruit, something that you can change your infrastructure rates on, change the rates on right now, so that you can gain money from solar customers, but that's not going to solve the underlying problem. When you have a $2.5 million deficit in your residential power, picking on solar customers isn't going to make up that deficit. Solar customers are not subsidized by other customers. Commercial and retail subsidize all residential customers in Provo. If you want to be fair about this, you take the 24% that are not paying their infrastructure fees throughout the entire city, and you raise the base rates. If you're worried about the poor or the people who are on fixed incomes, then you put in place a subsidy that they can prove their financial status to the city, and then they get those subsidies from the cities. This has been done in many other areas. The federal government does it all of the time, and it's something that still allows those who are on fixed incomes, who have a low or in the poor category, to still get the subsidies, but you gain the money you need to pay for the infrastructure, for the cost for the city. One thing I found interesting in the work session meeting this afternoon was the fact that Mr. Berg brought up, that the demand of energy is not going up, it's the infrastructure costs that are going up. So even if you change the rates of what you, change the rates on how much you people spend for the energy that they use, the demand isn't going up for that energy, it's the infrastructure costs. So changing the rates for energy usage isn't going to help gain money for the infrastructure costs. And it's not like solar customers are trying to avoid paying our infrastructure costs. There's, I've been hearing this a lot of, "Oh, they just want to avoid paying their infrastructure fees." That's not true. We're just trying to mitigate all of the incoming costs in our lives and provide a stable environment for our families. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Alligood.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Evans. I am the president of the Utah Solar Energy Association. I am not a Provo resident. I'm not going to make comments, you know, upon being a resident. However, would like to make just a few observations from what I've seen in this process that I think are worth asking the question to. First and foremost, I think it's really easy to throw the word subsidy around when many hours of time were spent looking into the costs of the system and the cost of solar potentially to the system, as well as thousands of dollars to look into that system. I wonder what it would look like if we were to spend half that time looking at the benefits rather than just maybe 20 to 30 minutes that were done in a couple of different work sessions. I don't know, that 20 to 30 minutes with not a lot of access to the system itself in terms of analyzing it gives a very good look at what those benefits really might be back to this community. I've heard that this is the easy one to implement, meaning the $3 surcharge, and that five other Oompa cities are doing it. Well, those five other cities have very different needs and a very different systems than does Provo. I don't think that's the easy way. I don't think public policy was ever meant to be easy. You don't have an easy job. It's difficult, as Mr. Berg did say, to make broad changes to rate design, to affect the rates of all users. That's difficult. And I know you all have that difficult job on a regular basis of deciding public policy. This solar surcharge was also said that this was sort of a halfway point, and that it would not hurt solar necessarily in the city. However, in speaking with roughly, and this is specifically with about eight to 10 different solar owners, if I could actually go through and remember them all, and each one of them, not a one said that they would probably continue doing much solar business in the city of Provo. Truly, this conversation or this surcharge does hurt. It in effect does subsidize the rest of the users here. And then lastly, my simple last observation in that is, sitting through this tonight, I have really appreciated hearing some of the comments. And I think by not having more public comment or more opportunity for discussion, we have limited Provo's opportunity to hear other proposals. Just in this comment period alone, we have heard at least three different proposals on how to help the city with both their rate design and with the solar customers that they have in Utah. Lastly, I don't think this is an urgent issue. Provo's not the fastest-growing city for solar adoption, as we've seen in other cities across the state of Utah. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
There you go. Good evening. My name's Dave Rasmussen. I'm a resident of Provo. I also represent Vision Solar. We are an employer located here in Provo. We employ about 150 people at our corporate office in Provo in the River Woods. And we have operations in four different states with just over 400 employees, and so we have a lot of experience with different municipalities, and we are actually heavily involved in the Nevada decision to cap net metering and kind of destroy net metering. We had about 110 employees there that were installing about 12 megawatts a year of power in that area. And once the decision was made to not only cap net metering, but also to get rid of the grandfathering rules, it destroyed the industry, and we moved all of our employees that we could move, including some of them up here to Utah, but a lot of them lost their jobs as well. So it was a hard thing for us to basically close up shop and leave. And so, my concern is with this proposal is, it mirrors that where there's no grandfathering, and we're adding an additional charge without kind of a well-thought-out process of, you know, what's the future look like? And so, I encourage you to look at not just, you know, what's the proposal look like, but also grandfathering those who already have installed solar, you know, on the current rules, and to really think about, you know, I as one, I've installed a 22-kilowatt system on my home, and I produce about 80% of my power from my system. And so, I pay approximately $1,200 a year back to Provo City. With this charge, I'd be another, you know, $66 a month, or another $800 a year. And so, it's actually hurting those of us who installed under a different, obviously, rate schedule, but going forward, it would kill the policy, because it would affect those that have bigger systems. It would make us, you know, everyone would want a 3-kilowatt or less system to really not affect their bill. And so, I think as an employer, we also have, we just renewed a lease, we're taking over the Borders Books buildings in the River Woods that's been sitting vacant for about five years, and we chose Provo as our, to stay in Provo because of its policies and because it's business-friendly. And so, we love it here, and we hope that you guys would not just look at it from a standpoint of, you know, the $3 a kilowatt, but what is it doing to affect the businesses here as well? So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rasmussen.
My name's Chad Rasmussen. I too am with Vision Solar. And I'm a proud member of the solar community, and there's several hundred, if not thousands, of Provo-based, I guess, employees of solar companies. It's a very good place to work, like Dave just mentioned, and I love Gary's comment earlier, we're looking to find the solutions together as opposed to fighting against each other. We love, as a solar company, we, you know, we love working with utility companies. It's kind of a necessity to provide a great service. So this isn't like the people against Provo Power necessarily, but just finding the right solution. And so, I just want to encourage the council to continue to find that right solution, because I, my opinion is that the current suggestion may not be the best one. And that's because when a customer looks to go solar, typical cost of solar on average of our thousands of customers that Vision sets up is on average around $20,000 to $30,000. Most customers can't or don't have that liquid capital to be able to buy the system outright, so instead, they choose to finance the system. And a lot of residents, I think nationwide, but maybe, you know, also applicable here in Provo, is they're on a, you know, fixed budget monthly. And so, raising, you know, $18, $20 monthly can negatively impact them. And right now, in Utah and in Provo in particular, a customer, if they choose to go solar, and they choose, which is most common, to finance that solar system, they're paying more in energy costs monthly on their solar system for the first few or several years, or sometimes not even at all, so that they can go solar. And so, adding that additional 15 to... And so, adding that additional $15 to $30 onto their monthly bill makes it so it really is difficult to justify going solar. I, it would be great if we all lived in this utopian society where it's like, yeah, we want to go, we want to go green, but I think most of the customers are more concerned about saving green, you know, in their costs and their expenses. So, another point to consider.
Thank you, Mr. Rasmussen.
I'm back. It's taken a little while. Charles Cox, Grandview. I'm a solar owner. Your fee will increase my bill $500 a year, plus the fact that in March, your power company will take $500 worth of credit. So this little action will cost $1,000 a year. All I wanted to do was cut my carbon footprint. How many pounds of carbon did you save last year? I saved 92 ton of carbon. Are you impacting our bad air? I used to burn a wood stove. I don't burn a wood stove anymore. I use solar power to run my home. I'm pleased that it saves money, but I'm pleased that when I walk outside at night during the spring and the winter and the fall, I don't smell my stove burning anymore. What are you guys thinking? Be proactive. Be the first city that doesn't impose a fee just because five other cities have done it, or Mantai, a dinky little town, Lavanne, a dinky little town, Nephi, barely above a dinky little town. Come on, you have nothing in common with them except for Oompa. And I understand that. I'm from Mantai. But you're not making any sense here by imposing a fee. There are better ways to solve this. We didn't have a tiered level power bill a few years ago. Everybody played their fair share, flat across the board. When you went to a tier level, yep, we saved the people that didn't burn much power a lot of money. My bill went up, $100 a month. So I went to work to reduce it, reduce it so that I could have an impact on the air at the same time. Come on, get real about it. This isn't just an act of saving this power company money. They're generating over $10 million extra every year to hand to the general fund. Be realistic. Government has done this for years. Well, we'll take the cash cow and we'll pay the ones that can't, we can't afford to run over here and we'll make it look like we're a cheap place to live. Why don't you be fair? If Parks and Recreation do cards a million bucks, why are they giving it to them? Make it pay. And if you have to increase the property taxes to be fair, be fair, but why penalize me because I'm generating power and I push enough power back on the grid to help four homes? And that's what I wanted to do. And now you want to charge me $500 for the privilege of doing that? And they got $10 million in their back pocket that they can pay plenty of maintenance on the hardware. It doesn't make sense. Thanks for your listens to me.
Thank you, Mr. Cox.
My name is Bruce Bailey. I'm in the Provo Peak area. We just put on a 11-kilowatt system on our house. We did this over the summer. We would have been, it took three years to kind of figure out what we wanted to do, if we wanted to go solar, what were the pluses and minuses. I, my wife, we talked about the environmental impact, the cost and how it's going to impact us. We did a lot of calculations to kind of figure this out. And we took out a loan, it cost us $35,000, took out a loan to do it, and we had, so we have this home equity loan on our house. I had to talk my wife into it. She didn't want to do it. She was nice enough. We kind of figured this out. We thought maybe if we paid it upfront, we would make, have some benefit in the future and we'd have an impact on the environment. Right now, we're paying more monthly, and it's kind of what was already said, we're paying more monthly now than we would have if we did not go solar. However, we thought, well, in the future, if prices go up, we would be in a better place and that would be okay. But we're paying quite a bit more now than we would have. In addition, this would add another $30, $40 onto our existing costs. And then again, that even makes it even more, and if we would have known this upfront, right, if we would have known this upfront, that would have been at least another calculation into our, into the whole estimation of whether we should do this or not. I think there's value in solar. I think there's value in the impact on the environment. I don't know all the ins and outs of the engineering and how it all works. It's a little bit higher math and I vote my free grade, but I do know that it seems to, I think, at least it seems to have an environmental impact and in addition to that, hopefully has an economical impact. And so, I just urge you to think about it more closely. It does put an extra burden on those people who thought about it and made choices to buy solar under the current net metering agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Hi, I'm Erica Dahl. I'm the director of government affairs for Vivon Solar and I've been attending the work sessions and meeting with many of you for the last several months. I just wanted to give a little snapshot of Vivon Solar. I appreciate my competitors that are here today, along with Ryan Evans, our president of the Utah Solar Energy Association. We talk about battling it out on the streets of Utah for customers, but for something like this, to see our industry come together is very impactful for us and we appreciate the opportunity for you to give us this time. For Vivon Solar, we're a company that was born and raised in Utah. We're based in Utah County. We have 4,000 employees. 1,200 of us live and work in Utah and 200 of those, 1,200, live in Provo, including our vice president of operations, Ben Young. Vivon Solar is the second-largest residential solar installer in the U.S. and we provide residential solar systems in 14 states. I cover those 14 states and federal government relations by myself and I've spent a lot of time in Provo because our company, because this is our backyard, we feel extremely invested in Provo. We had the opportunity to meet with Mayor Curtis and with Travis in February, just to introduce our company. We've grown a tremendous amount in many of the other states on the western and eastern seaboard, but we wanted to have an opportunity, when I came on board, to visit with the mayor. I served with the mayor for many years on a commission that we were both appointed to by Governor Huntsman, enjoyed working with him tremendously and was excited to talk about what Vivon Solar could bring to the community of Provo. Travis gave us a lot of terrific information and suggested that we visit with Don Jarvis. So we've been working with Don since February and appreciate his leadership on this issue. We've appreciated the opportunity to share our perspective through the work session two weeks ago from my colleague, Andrew Walton, and we know that great work has been done, particularly by Councilman Sewell. We want to thank you for all of the hard work that you've put in over the last couple of weeks to really delve into this issue. I just want to end by saying that our key concern is that the Berg study is a cost-of-service study, and I've worked on these issues in many states over the last 18 months and many municipalities. This is a common issue where it's simply the cost of solar and not the benefits of solar. And I applaud your residents of Provo who have invested their own dollars and know what their system is doing, not just for themselves, but for their community, and they're outlining those benefits to you tonight. And we would appreciate as an industry if you would take into account the value of solar before you rush into a proposal that we really believe is one-sided. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dahl.
My name is Margaret Van Leuven. My husband was born and raised in Provo and since I came to BYU in 1955, Provo has been my primary residence. We raised our children here. We are retired schoolteachers. I will not live to reap the benefits of the solar we put in because the cost will outlive me, I think. But being a schoolteacher, I saw days when my children could not go out to recess because of inversions. This is what drove me to do this.
Thank you, Ms. Van Leuven. Are there other comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion, or the public comment portion of the meeting and we'll bring it back to the council for discussion. Mr. Connect?
I have a few questions. I don't see Don here, but hopefully Travis.
Don is over to the left.
Okay, Don, so I don't know who wants to answer this. We talk about the indirect benefits, the health issues, the clean air, and I'm just wondering what percent of air pollutants in Utah Valley are created or generated by electrical generation?
I think Don should answer that one.
Very little of the pollution in Utah County is generated from electrical generation. I don't believe that Oompa purchase any of its, of its energy from Utah County. Most of our pollution is caused by our automobiles and by our buildings.
Thank you, Mr. Travis. Not at this time. Thank you.
Also, Travis, there was a claim or an observation made that our tiered power bill that we went from a flat rate, that we somehow that we raised the bottom rate, but I-
I don't think the base rate actually changed. I think what changed was the inclining rates. That was to encourage conservation. I wasn't here when that took place, but Karen's here and she probably was involved in that a little bit. So if you have a specific question about that, you can ask Karen.
Okay, and what I want to do is just ask a couple of questions and then turn it over because I don't want to monopolize. Another question is, how much have solar users reduced the peak demand in our system, if any?
I'm sure there's a small portion that reduced the peak demand. If they're west-facing, the problem we have is we don't have really good data on that, right? We don't have all of our smart meters installed, which by the way, there was a comment that we need to install smart meters. We have about 3,000 out right now and we'll have the full city deployed by next September. So the whole city will have what we call automated metering infrastructure where it's a two-way communication will give us a lot better data on that. But it's a small percentage.
Right. Currently, it's a small percentage. It would be more if they were west-facing.
Sure.
Mr. Winterton?
The 500, the credits that are coming back, what is the city doing with energy? Are we really charging the residents another $500?
If the solar panels are oversized and they're generating a lot of power and so they're generating it back on the system and you have a credit at the end of, I believe it's March or April, those credits are wiped out. So, I would say for those customers who are generating not much power, they aren't paying anything. They have zero bills. And if you look, if they go back and look, they're not paying the Utility Transportation Fund. They're paying zero a lot of the time. There are some months where they're paying some, but a lot of times they are, they are getting zeroed out.
And is that $500 actually that goes back onto the, is that actually helping the Provo residents?
No, I mean, we pay for everything that's over-generated. We're paying a rate between nine and 12 cents for that, for that power.
And so, it's actually costing us as a city to put that back on? Because we're paying it back up to the, up to that five?
Up to, we're paying between nine and 12 cents for every kilowatt hour that is generated from a solar customer.
Until, at some point though, we drop it off in the end of the year? And so, so actually, when they put power back on, it's actually costing the city?
Well, we are buying that at a retail rate.
At a retail rate.
For the extra power that's put on. I will say for what we are working on as a community solar, the cost for that power is coming in under five cents for every kilowatt hour that's generated on solar, community solar. Those are on like a 2-megawatt system. Those are proposals that we're looking at right now and we are purchasing about 2-megawatts of that. We are getting proposals for that right now.
So over a period of time, it sounds like if we compared the whole year, when they're saying, oh, I gave this back to the city at the end of the year.
We do pay.
We probably have paid more than what we're actually giving it back. Is that right?
Well, they get a credit, so it's a credit.
We're giving credit.
So they get a, if they-
Pardon me just a minute. Please maintain the decorum of the meeting and allow-
And come on, folks, I'm trying to understand. If you want some good decisions, give us a chance to ask the questions.
If they generate more throughout the whole year, so say they get a credit every month and so they're generating more on a monthly basis, and at the end of the year, if they still have a credit there, because they've generated throughout the whole year more than they've used during the year, then that credit is wiped out in March, I believe, or April. What is it, April or March? April. Or it's end of March, first of April.
Mr. Stewart?
Which is a typical net metering philosophy.
Travis, would it not be true that since we paid 10 to 12 cents, that there probably have, versus what we could have bought that power for, the credit doesn't make up the difference?
I would say we buy power for, we can buy power for less than five cents on the market.
And so, there's a five to seven cents difference, so that credit probably wouldn't add up to that difference. That's my observation anyway. I'd like to make some other comments. A comment was made, "Time to get it right." Other alternatives were presented to the council. First of all, were presented to the Energy Board and we heard those and decided this was the fairest and actually less expensive than several other alternatives for solar. Is that not right?
That is correct. When we looked at having a demand rate for all solar customers, that would have been much harder to get a payback for solar customers. Because they, first off, their energy is only paid back at about three and a half cents and they have a demand charge. So every month, whatever their demand was, it was about $7.50, which would have been a killer for solar customers.
And I think the council understands that and have considered that in making the recommendation from the Power Board. The Power Board made that consideration also, this is the fairest way to take care of the solar issue. So I would just, I just, I'm a little offended that people are saying that we didn't take time to get it right, we didn't study it carefully. We've been studying this for a number of months. Power Board studied it, made recommendations. Council has been studying it, made recommendations. That's what we're voting on tonight. The solar does not reduce the carbon footprint in Utah County. It just doesn't do it because our electricity is generated somewhere other than Utah County. It might reduce the carbon footprint worldwide or maybe in the state of Utah, but it certainly doesn't do it in Utah County, right?
That's correct. We don't buy power from sources in Utah County.
Another gentleman said that we don't represent the citizens of the city. I happen to represent 29,800 citizens that aren't on solar, that are subsidizing you solar users. And so, when you say we're not representing the citizens of the city, yes, we are representing the cities. Why are they not here? Because it isn't their interest at this point. If they knew they were subsidizing solar, I think you'd hear from a lot of them. It's interesting that we pride ourselves in Utah County and in Provo, that we're a capitalistic society, that we have the market economy. The market economy doesn't sustain solar if it wasn't for the subsidies of the federal government, if it wasn't for the subsidies of the state government. And if, and we're hearing tonight, if we didn't, don't subsidize it, it probably won't be viable here in Utah County. So if you're a solar provider, certainly you're going to be against what we're trying to do, trying to make a fair rate for all of our citizens, the 29,800 that aren't here tonight. So I, I'm a little, well, when I hear from solar companies that we're going to affect their business, that's not my job to protect their companies. My job is to protect the citizens and to make it as fair as possible for all of our So solar just doesn't stand on its own and I don't think it's fair for people that feel that solar will save the country, save the global warming, that somehow I should be paying for that if I don't feel the same way. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Harding?
Got a quick question for Mr. Ball. I think I may know the answer, but why April? If, for a standard solar customer in our valley, do they generally, and if they over-generate on some months and not on other months, is it generally through the winter months that they over-generate or is it generally through the summer months?
They don't generate over in the winter months. And so we looked at when would be the best economic sense for the solar customers. We were requested by one of our citizens because it was the best for him as a solar customer. That's why we chose the first of April.
April, okay. That makes sense.
So we didn't wipe out as much as we would have if we did it earlier in the year.
Okay, thank you. That's my question.
Mr. Van Buren?
Mr. Ball, can you? Couple of comments were made about this policy isn't looking forward, it's not looking into the future, we're not being forward-thinking. I know in our discussions that that was a big part of our discussion is how this will affect us in the future and how this will apply. Can you maybe just make a couple of comments regarding that?
Sure. Like we said, we didn't want to make it honor us for solar, but we also wanted to recover the costs for the distribution grid, those grid costs. So we didn't include some of the other costs that Dave mentioned earlier. I would also say that we've looked at other areas to see how, like St. George has done their system. They have a high base rate, so they do get a higher base rate. I think they charge about $15.50 plus they also have this cap capacity charge. They don't do it for the first 3 KW, they charge a minimal fee about $1.50. But when you say $15 by dollar plus a $1.50, it's actually higher than what we're proposing. Then that 4KW, it ramps up very quickly. So they're actually doing about the same thing that we are proposing, other than I think it's a little bit higher. I asked, is that something that is hurting their solar installations? According to them, they haven't seen a decrease in solar installations in St. George. Now, does that answer your question? I do think we're, all we're trying to do is recover the cost for the grid that we're looking at. And we are still, I believe, subsidizing those solar users. And we do think there is value to solar. That's why we're looking at community solar to give everybody an opportunity to buy into a community solar project. But we know that those projects will come in at about half the cost that we pay for a rooftop solar system.
Mr. Connect?
So Travis, we've talked about the $6 a month roughly that we pay now and how it could be under some models as high as $27 to cover the base charge, the infrastructure. So that might be like $21 more per month for the average customer. And then we talked about what, compensating, balancing by lowering the cost of electricity if we upped the base rate?
Sure, I think if you look at the cost of service, as you up that base rate, the energy charge would go down.
Right. And so the net effect, as I see it, for if we went to that path and charged everybody that same cost, it would change the model, the payback model for solar in two ways. The base rate per month, because sometimes they're not paying very much depending on their usage and if they're 80 or 100%, depending on their panels and how much energy they produce. So besides that, if we change the amount, the cost of the kilowatts, that we would then be buying it back at a lower price, correct?
Correct.
So that would also change the model.
Correct.
And as far as grandfathering goes-
That would affect them if they're over-generating and we're paying them and we're giving them the credit.
Yes.
If they're just shaving and they don't have a huge system, then it would be a net effect, but it would just be the net effect on that rate. So it'd be comparable.
Okay. Now, as far as grandfathering goes, if someone entered into a deal and invested in solar and they were expecting none of the parameters to change and they wanted all the parameters to be grandfathered, that would mean that their $6 a month base service charge would also be grandfathered. Otherwise, we'd be changing the deal. And so I don't know if they're asking to be exempted from that. If we did go down, and I don't think we are, but if we did change it so everyone was paying the $27, then that would affect their model significantly.
Are there other questions? Mr. Harding?
I have a question, but not for Mr. Ball. If I could.
I like that.
The question was asked about air quality within the valley and we heard from Mr. Ball and Mr. Jarvis about that. There was perhaps a dissenting opinion. I would like to ask that question before making a comment on-
To Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Do you mind coming to the podium? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. So we've heard from two that are saying that solar generation has little impact on the local airshed in Utah Valley. Do you disagree with that?
I don't necessarily disagree, it just doesn't paint the whole picture. So I do come from a perspective of a history in air quality. I was 13-year employee of the Sully Chamber. I led all of our public policy and engagement programs for air quality. I sat on the governor's Clean Air Action Team and I am a board member for the Utah Clean Air Partnership. So I have a very good understanding of air quality in our valley. To that point, no, probably not a lot of Provo's pollution problems come from locally-generated emissions. However, if you look at the overall landscape of Utah County's air quality problems, roughly, I want to say it's 52% right now comes from vehicle emissions. 37% comes from areas, area sources which are homes and businesses. Those area homes and businesses, as we are able to cut back on the amount of fossil fuel consumption, it will help bring down that number. It is the fastest rising portion of the pie chart. So right now, because of technology, vehicle emissions are coming down dramatically and area source pollution is going up relatively dramatically. It's actually taking the inverse of the vehicles. So it's not an easy answer. There is no easy answer when it comes to air quality. There is no silver bullet when it comes to solving all of our problems. However, what is generally agreed upon by the air quality community is that every little step possible helps move us to better air in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Did you have another question for him?
Yeah, kind of a follow-up with that, though I may want to hear from Mr. Jarvis. But one of the constant, common comments from the public was regarding our air quality in the valley, talking about inversions and whatnot. And I do hope that we understand that our local airshed is not impacted by our electrical use. And so the rooftop solar, you say it's complex, but in this aspect, it's actually pretty straightforward that solar-generated power in the valley does not help our local airshed. That doesn't diminish our responsibility towards the global airshed, but as far as our, as far as our inversions in our critical air quality, this would not have an effect. If people wanted, and Mr. Jarvis, correct me if I'm wrong, if people really wanted to do, to take steps to improve our air quality in Utah Valley, they would put on solar, but it would be a solar hot water assist rather than photovoltaic. And that would have a direct impact on the local airshed for our valley. Mr. Jarvis, if you could speak to that?
If I could say one quick little aspect, just quick. I wouldn't oversell the environmental benefits. I would not put that on you, however, there are some. And what I would say is that actually if you had a PV system and you had an electric car and you implemented battery storage in the near future as that price starts to come down as well, then all of a sudden you have reduced your emissions quite a bit. And having the ability to charge your car through a storage system or directly through your PV during the day, then you're looking at some different equations here. So I would not necessarily rule out that there isn't. It's just a matter of taking the right steps as they come along as available.
Thank you.
Two comments in relation to Mr. Harding's question. Number one, I'm always surprised that there's not more discussion of solar heating around the world. Solar heating, solar water heating is very popular and is quite cost-effective. Little more difficult here where we have freezing temperatures at night, but we probably need to look more into it. And I hope that some entrepreneurs will do that. And that would reduce NOx emissions significantly. I think that we need to think more about that. And as far as the question is, no, electrical generation does not affect our airshed here. But on the other hand, there's a lot of pollution put out from coal-burning power plants and these, this, it's not just the carbon issue, which some people are not concerned about, but it's also mercury pollution, which is a worldwide problem. And I think that maybe we ought to take some responsibility for that, although I don't expect Travis to pay for it all.
Mr. Connect?
So we were hearing about the amount of pollution in the valley coming from industrial versus homes and business, and the home and business is an increasing share of the pie chart. And that is because we heat our homes with natural gas and we heat our water with natural gas. Most people don't have an electric hot water heater because it's not cost-effective. So even if I don't use electricity in my home, at least off the grid, I am still going to be using the same amount of natural gas to heat my home and to heat my hot water. So we really don't reduce the emissions and clean up our airshed. However, I remember back in the 70s, you'd see people install these things on their roof way before solar and they were heating up their hot water and heating their home. Admittedly, you have to put some glycol in the system. But if you can heat your hot water or heat your home and not be burning natural gas in this valley, then you will be cleaning up our airshed. And that's something I would say is worth promoting and saying, yes, we can actually clean our air with, and we don't see a lot of that going on right now.
Are there other comments or questions? Mr. Sol?
Bryce, can you pull up those four principles to start with and then have the Vision 2050 ready after that? The four principles that I sent you earlier today? It was both in the attachment and in the email? Oh, okay, sounds, I can send it again. Can you put up the- Pardon? Okay. Let's see. Okay, here it comes. So K K E R R at Provo? Okay, it's on its way. I guess we'll talk about the vision first. This is from the Vision 2050 draft that talks about our goals in this area. 4.6, improve energy efficiency in Provo and reduce our dependency on fossil fuels. 4.6.3, promote- Okay. Well, let's finish with the Vision 2050 first. 4.6.3, promote private and public generation of renewable energy resources, i.e. wind and solar. I think, I'm not sure, but I think those two might be new in the Vision 2050 draft because when I was scanning through Vision 2030, at least I didn't see them, but there's two more that are in both. And this is 4.7, 4.7.1 and 4.7.2. Seek opportunities to diversify energy resources. Seek opportunities for consumer alternatives to purchase energy from renewable resources. This is part of our city's vision. I appreciated what Bonnie said about being part of that, the development of that, and Mr. Connect and many others. I feel like what we're talking about tonight would de facto be a rewriting of this section. And I think that is a serious issue that we need to talk about. If this is our vision, then we should be encouraging renewable energy, both publicly, community solar and privately. Now, we can go over to the principles if you could bring that one up. Thank you. I'd like to suggest these four principles on which this decision should be based. The first three came from Mayor Curtis several weeks ago. Sent them to Don and I think he's shared them with some others. And the only thing I changed on those first three, it's almost word for word with what he suggested, except he had the word solar in number two and number three. And I'm suggesting that we substitute renewable energy there because there are other potential sources of renewable energy that we could use. And the fourth one is one that I would suggest that we add is that I really think we need a roadmap that current customers, potential customers and solar industry players can look at to see what our goals are and how we plan to get there. I've seen this in other states, just in the last few weeks that I've immersed myself in this issue, trying to understand it. There are states that have specific goals. They say we want to get to here. I think the lowest I saw was like maybe 3% or something like that. There's some that have 5, 10. I think there's a few states that have higher goals than that. And as part of the roadmap, they'll say, now when we get to this point, then the incentive structure can change. And that's fine as long as you get that out there way in advance and advertise it and the players know what to expect. I'm really concerned about the way this has come about and kind of how we got here. I have great respect for our Power Department and our Energy Board, who have been very forward-thinking in a lot of things. But in this area, I'm really struggling to understand how we could have a proposal that would go all the way through our Power Department, Umpa and our Energy Board and how we could be sitting here talking about making this drastic of a change, this suddenly, potentially without even grandfathering in residents who I view as partners in helping us achieve our vision and our policy objectives. I just, I don't understand that. I just, I don't understand that. And I hope that if the will of the majority is to go this route with the surcharge, which I don't support, that the very first decision we would make is that there would be grandfathering for, you know, a long time period for, over the course of the investment, 20 years, maybe, something like that. The other thing that really bothers me, I liked what Mr. Winterston was saying about the partnership between business and community and that. And I, I feel like that's been missing here with respect to our solar industry players. I, I think they're partners in helping us achieve our vision and helping other people in other areas as well. Apparently, we, our companies are active in a lot of other states. But to just kind of throw this wrench in there suddenly without hardly any advance notice, I don't think we're treating them respectfully. And I, I think we should value that partnership. So, and in terms of this solar surcharge, as Mr. Walters, I think, pointed out, we have about 44% of us that use a lot of energy, I'm probably in that category, or above-average amounts of energy, that are subsidizing to greater or lesser degree the other 56%. And we're picking this little teeny, tiny fraction of that to impose a surcharge. To me, if fairness is the issue, if subsidization is the issue, I think we're just adding another unfair structure on top of the one that may already exist. Where does that end? If we're going to do a surcharge on solar energy, are we going to have to do surcharges on other types of renewable energy? I, I sent out an email to my constituent list recently expressing concern about this situation. And I got about 27 responses. There was one who expressed concern about, well, I don't want to, I don't want to subsidize those wealthy solar people or something like that. And all of the rest, 25 to one, expressed concern in various ways about this proposal. I could, I could read you a few of the comments. They were really interesting, but most of them were similar, I think, to what, what you've heard tonight. But on the subject of the solar surcharge, one that was kind of amusing was he says, well, what if we, what if we get all the kids in the neighborhood together and harness their energy and we start producing renewable kid power? And I actually know one of our neighborhood chairs, Ben Markham, actually produces power in Ghana from merry-go-round. So, I don't know, maybe that's not so far-fetched. But then he says, are we going to have to start charging a surcharge on, on kid power as well? And I thought that was kind of amusing, but I was curious because I could, I could, I could see maybe that happening if we follow this line of logic. So I poked around a little bit on the Internet and actually found three examples of municipalities that not only charge a surcharge but also on, on solar, but charge a surcharge on other forms of renewable energy. One of them had three different surcharges: solar, microhydropower, and biogas. Now, I'm not sure how that works. I'm not sure I want to know how that works, but, you know, how far do we go? And then there was another one that had a surcharge on solar and micro wind turbines. So I think, getting back to Mr. Walters' presentation, we've got some structural rate deficiencies in my mind here. And we, we saw a few options in the council meeting, in the work session. Most of those were pretty extreme. That, you know, there's just, we're not going to raise the base rate to $27 and drop the energy rate to six cents. I don't think there's some policy reasons for maintaining, you know, some of that subsidization that's going on. And some of those reasons were talked about, but we could move in that direction. Even a teensy-tiny step in that direction would raise as much money as we're talking about here. I calculated roughly, if we don't grandfather, which I would strongly suggest that we should, we'd raise something like $45,000 or $50,000 with this surcharge the first year, or 55, I can't remember. And we could raise an equivalent amount by increasing the base rate by about 13 cents. And that would, that would be a little teeny-tiny step in the direction that I think we need to go. Our rate consultant said our base rate's too low. Almost everybody's saying our base rate's too low. So in this new energy economy, more energy efficiency, energy usage tending to go down, I think we're going to have to take a few steps in that direction. So why not take a first little teeny-tiny step now and not, not do this disincentive for continued solar? We have a hard cap right now, 5% anyway. So, anyway, I, my opinion is that what we should do is look at this further, not do a solar surcharge, examine our rate structure, look at the benefits. That's another thing. I really related to some of the things that Kate Bowman from Utah Clean Energy said in her presentation because I had a very similar feeling. I looked at the cost study and she said it was something about like balancing a checkbook and kind of looking backwards, and it was all about the dollars and cents, but there was nothing in there. And I've sat in on the Energy Board meeting and UMPA Board meeting, and they don't talk about the value of solar. It's, it's all dollars and cents. And I, I think we need to look at that. There are some definite benefits to that, and that needs to be part of the equation. So my, my suggestion would be to not do the, not do the surcharge. If short-term revenues are concerned, do the 13-cent base rate increase and form a council committee to get some of these players in the same room. And let's hammer this out. What is our vision for the future? I, I feel like, as many, several of you said, if we go this route, we're taking a step backward. We are, this doesn't fit with Provo's forward-thinking vision. I wish Mayor Curtis was here to comment on this. I think he's maybe trying to stay out of it, I don't know, but he, this, I think of him as a leader in this area. He's been the captain of the ship in sustainability and renewable energy. I don't think this fits really very well with the way I think of his leadership in this area. So anyway, I'd like to see some, some Provo Power people. We've got super-smart people that know this stuff inside out, some UMPA people in the same room. And I just do not understand how we could have gotten this far without having people like Kate Bowman from Utah Clean Energy involved, people like Ryan Evans from Solar Industry, without having some of our own solar customers involved in this discussion? Let's, let's get in the same room and talk about this. I think the public needs more, needs to know about this more, too. My just very preliminary poll indicates that there's pretty strong support for this vision that we have. And if, I don't think we should erase it out of, out of here by a backdoor method that doesn't involve some specific public input. There was a lot of effort that went into this vision. And I don't think we should reverse it without a similar effort and make sure that that's what the people really want to do. If people don't want this anymore, then that's one thing, but we still need to signal way in advance so customers and solar companies can plan. So anyway, that's my suggestion. That's, that's how I feel about it.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart?
I'd just like to read something from an email I received from a citizen of Provo. Nevertheless, it is wrong for those who have solar to expect that they should use the grid at a reduced cost from all other taxpayers. In other words, solar owners should not expect a subsidy from non-solar owners for a shared utility. And that's really what solar owners are asking for tonight. They're asking for a reduced cost. Studies have shown exactly what this gentleman has said in this email to me, and that's what I'm representing here tonight.
Mr. Harding?
I appreciate Mr. Sewell's comments, and there's a lot that I agree with. There are a few points that I disagree with. I've got thoughts all over the place, so let me try to string them together in some sort of coherent manner. I guess I'll first, there were, there were some comments from, from the public that, let me, let me start with this one. There was a comment that, you know, up until this point, I always thought that, that solar was a good thing, and now people are telling me that it's not. I echo that, that sentiment. You know, for a long time, I thought solar, you know, was just an all-around good thing. And it wasn't until I started really diving into the details of how, you know, electrical generation and transmission and contracts and costs and peak demand and load, load rate, load factors and, and all of these things that I started realizing, you know, that, that solar wasn't necessarily a win-win for everyone if you look at just the dollars and cents. And that definitely surprised me. It was, it was not what I expected, is not, you know, aligned with, with, with what I thought and kind of where my values were. There were some other comments that were made that, that I thought, well, you know, if you think that that's the problem we're trying to solve tonight, you know, that's, that's wrong, or at least that's not how I, the problem that I see. And so I guess I was a little bit surprised when I hear Mr. Sewell echo some of these things that I kind of stop and say, wow, that's not how I see things. That's not, you know, for me, this is, is not and has never been about, you know, raising revenue off of the current solar customers. To me, this has always been a fixing a structural deficiency. You know, we, we had a system in place for how we pay for, for power, which, you know, has its pros and cons. There's different ways of doing things, but it was, it was the way that everyone kind of agreed, this is how we're going to pay for power. And, and distributed generation disturbed that a little bit. It was never something that was considered when these rates were originally set up. And so, you know, you could look at it in shorthand, it's somewhat of a loophole that, that could be, you know, that was, that was there. And so for me, it's been more, it's more of, let's, let's fix this for the future. We hear, you know, people that just put on solar this summer, and now they're saying, you know, how can you change the rates on me? And I thoroughly agree with you about grandfathering. I think that's something that we need to have a serious discussion. You make a wonderful point about this was the council's policy. And basically, we asked our residents to help us realize this vision. And so to turn, turn around and say, oh, hey, thanks for, for helping us with that. We've changed our minds and now you're going to be stuck with the cost. I think that's, that's inexcusable. That's, I hope that's not something that we will, will consider. Though I, I have to ask, do we have, first, do we have a contractual obligation to, for those who have entered into net metering agreements with us, to not change the rates? Where are we at?
In the contract that says the rates can be changed at any time. I, Ryan could probably look at that, look that up, but there is a common, there is a sense in there that doesn't contractually set us to that rate when they sign the contract.
Okay. And, and they, that was disclosed to them? They signed that, whether, they signed the contract?
I don't know if everybody reads the contract, everything in the contract.
Okay. Thank you. So we have, there's the potential contractual obligation, which, which we don't have. It was disclosed, at least in the contract, that that was a possibility. But the next question is, do we have an ethical and moral obligation to, to that? And I, I think we do. I hope, I disagree that this is picking on solar customers and not on, you know, not all of these low, low-usage users. I think we can have a very, a very good separate conversation about base rates and all of that stuff. I think, I think that's, that'd be great to have, but there is a difference, as was pointed out clearly, I thought, earlier, that a 300-kilowatt net user has a very different infrastructure demand, causes a very different demand on the system than a 300-kilowatt gross user, someone who doesn't put the, isn't pulling and pushing solar, quite drastic. And so I do, I don't think, I think that there is some rationale behind treating solar customers, for example, who net 300 kilowatt hours differently than other customers who are doing 300 kilowatt hours. The, you talked about other renewables, and I think a simple, straightforward way to approach that would be to treat any sort of putting, and any sort of net metering would, could be treated the same, whether that's wind or biogas or, or micro hydro could be done, or, or kid energy. I mean, the question is, is if you're going to take that energy built or generated with a merry-go-round and you're going to try to sell it back to the power company, well, it should be treated the same as, as, as other net, net technologies. I'm getting probably a little too, one thing that I think is, is important, and I think we addressed it a little bit, but we talk about this as being a middle-of-the-road, that this does not fully cover all of the subsidization. Or another word for that would be incentives that are, that are built into our system. This, this only moves it to the middle of the road. If moving to the middle of the road makes it so these systems are no longer cost-effective, it may not, that, part of that incentive may be there, but it doesn't really matter if it's no longer cost-effective to put these, these systems in. And we need to realize that. We can say, well, we're still, we're not taking it all away, but in effect, we basically are, if we make it not cost-effective. Value of solar has been discussed, been brought up by the public several times, and I think we've talked about it. And I think that's kind of the difference between the, the cost of service study and the cost benefit. I do think that solar has a value to our community and in our place in the, in the wider world. I think that we need to have, we should have a serious conversation about whether, whether it's the place of the city to, to subsid, or to incentivize that. And if, if we find that it is, I would still argue that the net metering method of incentivizing solar is not the right way to do it. I think we should have a system much more similar to the federal government and the state government. I just, I don't think net metering is, is the way to go with that. If, if we feel that we should incentivize solar, I think we should determine how much we want to do, what, what makes sense. And then I also think it's important that we say, how can we get, how can we achieve our goals? How can we get the, the best bang for our buck that we're going to incentivize? And I don't, I don't think net metering is it. And so, there was one other thing, but that's back, so I won't, I won't, I won't address that. But my, I guess, last point that I'll make is that, I know others have been discussing this a lot longer than the council, that every time I've discussed it, reading through the papers, seeing these presentations, my position has changed over what I think is the most, the most prudent thing to do. And to me, that's a signal that, that maybe we should take more time because... because I don't know if anyone else on the council felt like, oh, well, we had, you know, one presentation today, and I thought, okay, you know, there's some, there's these things, and then we had another presentation, oh, well, hey, that's a really good idea. And then we had another presentation that rebutted some of the things that were said previously, but we never had a rebuttal on that. And so I don't feel settled, and so I think we should take more time. With that said, there is, I feel an urgency. I feel an urgency for that gentleman, and it looks like he may have left. No, no, anyway, who just, who just, the citizen who just installed a system in the summer, and he's, you know, surprised that now we're going to change the rules on him. So the urgency I feel, thank you, the urgency that I feel is that we need to be signaling, and I don't want additional people buying in, thinking that these are going to be the rules, and the rules are going to change. So to me, that's the reason why I would want to vote tonight, is to send that signal so no one else walks into this not knowing that these things are going to change. So what my preference would be is that we would hold off on, we discuss this more, decide how can we get the most money, the most value for the money that we subsidize or incentivize. But in the meantime, we put a moratorium on new net metering contracts. And so we send a strong signal now that this is something that we're, that's under discussion, and we have not decided on yet. So we put a hold on it for the time being, give us some time to go through the discussions and make some long-range sensible decisions that are going to be good going forward into the future.
Mr. Connect?
So we have to look at some of our conflicting and, I think, overriding concerns here. Well, I can see on the renewable energies policies that are on the screen now that the council's intent to protect Provo City's power financial stability and prepare for a future when 50% of our customers have renewable energy. One of the things we are also doing is reviewing all of our rates and fees throughout the city for everything. And one of the overriding principles in that policy is that people should pay for what they use or what they get. Now, occasionally, whether it's the rec center or something else, we decide that charging the full price is not in the best interest of the public, and it's better to find the funds elsewhere in our budget and basically subsidize it. Currently, with the basic service charge, people are paying roughly $78 a year when we saw in our work session that the real cost is more like $347 per year. And as I look at my usage of what I pay on my electric bill, a portion of what I pay on my electric bill goes back into the general fund, and it goes into the general fund in a variety of ways, not just one way. And I'm looking at my numbers, and I'm estimating that as much as $200 per year of my, out of my electric and the charges on my electric bill go back into the general fund. Well, we're all in this together. This is our power company. It's a co-op. And if I wanted to take my house off the grid and have batteries and not contribute, not buy electricity, and not pay a service charge, then I would expect to still pay my fair share, and I'd have to probably add $200 to my property tax. And even if I'm not participating in the grid, if I'm divorced from the grid, but I still have other obligations to the city, and our rate structures are set up so that we have chosen over time to collect money from the residents through our company, and it's a profit-sharing thing through our company. It's a big co-op. And I consider that to be a very important factor in this. We're not dealing with Rocky Mountain Powder, Power, or somebody. We're dealing with our own business structure, and you can't rob Peter to pay Paul. So everyone, it's got to be fair. Everyone's got to pay their fair share. So I just look at this, you know, as we say, a future with 50%, that's a huge deal if we ever did accomplish it, and it would have real ramifications to our financial model. And we can't demonize the power company. It's us. We're all in this together. And number four, rate structure and a roadmap, yes, we do need to be clear about where we're going and what it's doing to all aspects of our budget.
Yes, Mr. Stewart?
I don't remember this council, David, ever voting on renewable energy as something that we want to encourage. Not since I've been on.
Well, I think you asked me a question, so I'll respond. I don't think we've voted on Vision 2030, yes, yet, but, or the...
We did vote on 2030.
You did? Okay, so we...
We adopted 2030.
We did adopt Vision 2030, and that's in there, and then there was the council before that that set up the net metering program. So the way I look at it, in these, I see a lot of people I know here that have acted based on what the council did, based on what it says in Vision 2030, invested, risked large sums of money. You know, maybe they'll come out okay financially, maybe they won't. My sense is that most of these people have a real commitment to clean air and the environment, and that's a major factor in their decision. I don't, you know, I think we need to honor that.
So was it voted on then by the prior council?
Vision 2030 was.
Vision 2030 was, yeah.
Vision 2030 specifically says that we want to encourage renewable.
Yes, it says, well, I can read it right here. There's several statements in here. Work with UMPA to continue to seek long-term electrical energy resources which provide for stable and generally lower cost of electricity. Then the next one, the next two, seek opportunities to diversify energy resources in a cost-effective manner, including increasing energy percentages from renewable and alternate sources.
Those two are contradictory, number one, two, that you just said to me.
Well, I think we can all agree that on number one, we're all totally committed to the long-term stability of Provo Power. I mean, there's just no question about that, and there's... I guess where I'm coming from is, why settle for just number one on that list when we can do all four?
But your list, this isn't the Vision 2030.
No, 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 okay, so back to Vision 2030. Stick with Vision 2030, okay. So there's one more relevant sentence in there. Seek opportunities for consumer alternatives to purchase energy from renewable resources.
If it's cost-effective, I would agree. This isn't cost-effective.
A lot of people out there spending hard-earned cash.
Cost-effective means that for the average ratepayer in Provo, it's going to be subsidizing solar. That's not cost-effective, David.
Mr. Winterton?
Yeah, to me, the bottom line comes down to is, I am not, still not convinced the benefit of solar for our community. We have, they've given us a bunch of things, and we have been told today that it's probably not going to impact our air. It really is not going to impact our air. The solar is not. I'd like to know if, how many of you people have signed up for Renew Choice? If you're so concerned about the environment, that is probably even more effective than solar by signing up for Renew Choice. And I, our response to that has been very poor as a community. We are concerned as a community for lowering our costs. We are known as a cheap community, and we are looking, trying to lower our costs as much as we can. I respect that. We try to pay for what we want, we get, we pay for what we use. We want that. That's a value we have. I am just concerned about the benefits that are being purported that I am not sure that they're true. Those are some of the concerns that I have. And as we, but I do believe in some help for the community, because I believe that solar is still part of the future. I think that's important. So as we look to the future, is there some degree of subsidization? I can support that. And I understand, after studying, we did study all five issues, and this was the least offensive for the solar community, from what I understand. And so that was why we went with this, this was one of the reasons. It is still subsidizing the solar community. We're asking them to just give a little bit onto the grid that you're using. And I don't know, I'm struggling with the difference of using, I can't go to the car dealership and say, I'll put the gas in the car. Can't I just take one of these from the lot for a few days and then put it back? If I make sure it's full of gas when I leave it? I think that's a good example. No, but that's, those are, I'm just concerned about the benefits. I'm not sure that I'm actually seeing the benefits of our solar community, and I wish somebody could explain those to me a little more.
Mr. Harding?
Just a quick response. So you'd like someone to explain it more. Would you, would you be supportive then of taking a little more time to discuss this a little bit further?
They say we've been studying this for a year. We have been studying it longer than a year. I have been to conventions and meetings, and this has been a concern forever on this grid, on this, the grid, maintaining this grid. I am really concerned. What are you saying, a week, two? I'm just, I'm just would like, how many? We had a meeting a few weeks ago, and I still haven't seen the benefits. Nobody has explained to me benefit yet on the solar community.
I guess my proposal would be to put a moratorium on new net meter contracts for 90 days and hope to have an answer of where we, how we want to move forward at the end of that period.
Mr. Sewell?
So a couple of comments on this idea that we've been studying this for a year. I mean, I know, I know UMPA's been talking about it, Provo Power's been talking about it, but before it came to the work session on September 6th, hardly anybody in the solar community knew about this. Two days before that first work session, I thought, you know, I wonder if our city's sustainability committee chairman knows about this. I mean, at first, when I first saw it on the agenda, I assumed he did, and I thought, well, I'll just, I'll just send him an email just to make sure. Had not heard of it. No, not involved in the discussion. You know, you talk about what's, this is the least offensive to the solar community. How do we know that when they weren't involved in the discussion? That's, you know, you're not sure about the benefits, and we haven't done the study of what the benefits are. A lot of, you know, I relate to what Mr. Harding said about his position changing over time. Mine, it's kind of evolved too, as I've tried to drink from a fire hose the last three or four weeks and learn as much as I can. I do think we need to take a harder look at this. I don't think, personally, a moratorium is the best way to go because, well, for several reasons. First of all, this is just not that big a deal right now. I mean, the impact, that we're less than a half percent right now. We can easily tolerate more solar customers coming in for a few months or however long it takes. The second thing is just, just sort of out of respect to the industry players, I mean, I'm a business owner, and if you're conducting marketing activities in an area, you hire people, you make investments, and to just cut that off, that's just not, I mean, you know, again, this gets back to, we need a roadmap, we need goals, we need to send signals to the future so they can plan. That's the way I see it.
Mr. Stewart?
I just think it's important that we take care of this because more and more customers are going to be affected. Without us taking action by just delaying it, delaying it, we're hurting our citizens that are considering solar that by not knowing what our position is, because I don't think the industry's going to tell them that the city is considering raising your solar rates. I think that's, my big consideration is for the customer.
Mr. Harding?
And I think we can do both things. We can lay out a roadmap, and we can protect potential customers by putting in the moratorium and taking the time to lay, to plan out and lay out a roadmap.
Talk about hurting the industry. Moratorium means they can't sell in Provo for 90 days. I don't think they'd be really excited about that.
That may be true. I, my, I feel my biggest duty is to the public who owns our publicly-owned power utility as well as our residents, and so that's where my primary concern lies.
Mr. Sewell?
Just an alternative on the moratorium idea, two alternatives. One, I kind of think of the 5% cap as a moratorium. I mean, that's kind of out there. It gives, you know, some runway. If that is deemed as too far in the future, then maybe you take the currently-installed kilowatts and, I don't know, double it, or something that would give at least kind of a year of runway so companies can make plans and adjust their investments and their, where they're putting their efforts, and hopefully, we could be done with this a lot sooner than that, you know, before we hit that, whatever that cap would be.
Mr. Connect?
I just have one final thing, and Wayne, you might have a memory here. Years ago, we owned a geothermal plant in Cedar Fort, and UMPA bought that for probably a variety of reasons, including diversifying our energy portfolio and getting something that was renewable. And it seems like we were going in the hole maybe as much as a million dollars a year. Yeah, and so we had a struggle with that as members of UMPA to whether to keep that because we were basically, you know, buying clean power, but it was costing us a million dollars a year. And we sold it to a private company who could make it work because they were going to get subsidies from the federal government that we were not eligible for. So it's still there, it's still working and providing renewable energy, but we had to cut our losses and do the right thing for our ratepayers.
So I have a couple of thoughts. You want to go, Mr. Stewart? Go ahead.
I have a couple of thoughts, and neither one of them are going to be very popular. But I thought about Mr. Sewell's comment when he said, I don't know how we got this far without inviting these other entities, you know, to the table to discuss. And in one way, I think we did try that when we asked, in leadership, we asked Mr. Sewell to meet with Dr. Larry Walters, who is a solar customer, who also may have the tightest, most energy-efficient home in Provo. And we also had you meet with Travis Ball, and that kind of got the, some discussion going. But I agree there, I feel like there needs to be more. I know there were things that were brought up today in our work session. Mr. Walters brought up a sort of a different idea, a different way of looking at it, and that appealed to at least a couple of council members who made comments in that meeting, that this, you know, they liked parts of that proposal. Tonight, there have been proposals from citizens, and I haven't been able to really read through Mr. Marcus Daly's suggestion, but there have been other suggestions by citizens that I feel are worthy to look into as well. I, and I'd like to throw out the idea that maybe, what if we, you know, when you have this much discussion, and it just doesn't feel like... this much discussion and it, it just doesn't feel like we're ready to me, and some are very ready and, and some are not, and it just, I feel like there are still very divergent views on the council. And when you have divergent views and you get those divergent opinions in a room and you're able to work, work through some of these things, I, you know, you invite the, Mr. Evans, for instance, of the, who represents the solar industry, president of the Solar Industry Association. You invite Mr. Walters, who came with an idea that at least, you know, several council members seemed interested in. You invite, and I'm just going to point you out, Mr. Sewell and, and Mr. Stewart, who have kind of strong opinions on, on either side of the issue. And then you invite Travis Ball. And we, and you get together in a room and you, you talk this through a little bit, you, you discuss it. I feel like when you get those divergent views in a room and you discuss these things, sometimes the best, you know, a better policy comes out. And if this is the best policy in front of us today, this really is truly the best policy today, it will be the best policy in two weeks, it'll be the best policy in two months. I, I feel like it'll still be the best policy if, you know, if, if these groups were able to get together, this group, and, you know, it doesn't have to be those five, but I just feel like those are representative entities. I think that we'll have more cohesion when it comes to final decision. I will be much more settled if I feel like we've, we've had everybody at the table, we've been able to have those discussions, hammer it out, have all these different divergent views, and if they can come to a conclusion that really makes sense and they're representative of our community, then I think, for me, it's a lot easier to make a decision. Right now, I'm not settled, so. And then the other, oh, sorry, there was one more point. The moratorium, I, I'm not comfortable with because we don't know what that would do to the solar industry. If you put a moratorium on them, we have no idea what that would do. And so I'm not comfortable with, with that, with that part either, but, yeah, Mr. Stewart?
Kim, we've hashed it out. I've hashed it out. I think it's been hashed out. I don't think there's going to be a change in views to, to just delay, 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 which is typical of councils. I think we need to go with a decision. So I'd like to move that in order to amending energy rates on the Provo City Consultative Features will be approved.
Thank you. Is that a motion? Yeah, I guess you made that motion. So is there a second to that motion? Thank you, Mr. Connect, and we'll have discussion on the motion. I would like to say that I know that Mr. Stewart and Mr. Winterton have served on the Power Board, and they've been, they've had much more discussion. And I really, I respect your, your knowledge and what you've been able to glean from those meetings. I haven't been to those meetings, so my, my comfort level is not there. I haven't been discussing this for years myself. I mean, there have been brief discussions here and there, you know, at Umpa meetings or, you know, but it's been very spotty for me. I'm a nurse. I don't have solar installed, and so I've learned a lot. I feel like I'm becoming an expert on solar through this, through these discussions. But I just don't have that comfort level that I know you have, and I respect that and I admire that, and I'm, and I want to have that comfort level when I make a decision that's going to impact people. I want to have that comfort level myself. So that's where I'm coming from. Mr. Sewell?
A clarification question. There's kind of two options there, so I'd like to know which, which of the options you're proposing. First question is on grandfathering. Are you proposing that existing users be grandfathered? And if so, in what way? Like, I, I would suggest 20 years from installation, for example. My second question relates to, this is a suggestion that Mr. Travis Ball made to me, and I guess he's not supposed to make it here because it wasn't the recommendation of the Energy Board, but on multiple occasions at the Energy Board meeting and at the Umpa Power meeting, he has suggested a possible compromise of a two-kilowatt credit. So is your, does your proposal include that compromise or not? And does your proposal include grandfathering? And if it does, how, how would that work?
My proposal is Exhibit A, which adds solar generation capacity, which you all have and been given, $300, $3 a kilowatt, $3 a kilowatt, added to schedule number one.
So with, with no, no two-kilowatt credit?
No two-kilowatt credit and no grandfathering.
And no grandfathering. Okay. So on the grandfathering, I'd like to be able to sleep tonight when I go home. And if we vote, I'm looking here at Don Jarvis, I'm looking here at Bonnie Morrow, I'm looking here at Brian Jones, a lot of other fine citizens here concerned about our city, about our environment, about our clean air, who invested $20,000, $30,000 based on a former council resolution, based on a Vision 2030 document that we spent a very long time putting together, that outlines our vision. They did what we hoped they would do, and I, I guess I won't choose a word because I would probably choose one that was too strong for how I would feel if, if we did that. And in my mind, you know, I've heard that we need to hurry and do this because it's only going to get harder the more customers there are. Instead of 180 customers, if we had 1,800 customers, this room would be full, probably overflowing out there, and I don't think we would be even talking about not grandfathering. But to me, that doesn't make any difference, even if it's just 180, or if it's 18, or if it's two, or if Larry Walters is the only one, or Brian Jones is the only one, or, or this gentleman who I haven't met tonight, if he was the only one, I don't think that's fair, and I'm very strongly opposed to that provision.
Mr. Connect?
I'd like to hear how other council members feel about that important issue. Gary, what do you think?
I do have some concerns because I, I recognize that, and I'm not sure that our community ever intended to subsidize solar users. One of the things I can respect is that they are pioneers, and that's one of the things I don't know enough about. Nobody has explained to me the benefit of solar, other than saving money. And we have never told anybody that your rates will be this forever. And so they've, we've never, we've never been able to lock in rates. And if we, as a community, still want to subsidize, fine, let's say, why do we want to subsidize? I've never heard anybody say why we want to subsidize solar, other than that, oh, we like the renewable. One thing that I am concerned about is that thought that, yeah, we did, we did want that. I can see maybe the first two kilowatt maybe going forward as a, as a gesture to say, yes, we, we did want this as a community. And I think we do want it. I still want it as a, as part of our community vision because I believe the technology's going to improve and get better, and that will give us an opportunity to cut the subsidy. And I think we come back and revisit it at that time when we, when we deal with this. But we know the cost now, we recognize the cost, and I think that our community wants to be where we, where we pay our bills, where we, we pay for what we use.
Gary, would that be the, just the first two kilowatts for current customers, not?
No, that would be the first two kilowatts for, yeah, for just the current customers, correct. That, because I recognize them as pioneers, and I'm grateful for what they're doing for our community. And if that's possible to work in, that's something I could, I could get behind because I do believe, I still believe in the vision of solar.
I'm okay with that.
You're okay with what?
In my motion to, on current customers that are already installed, that we give a two-kilowatt credit. So it'd be after the first two kilowatts that we would charge it $3. As a gesture to the pioneers, I like the pioneer. I would prefer not to do it, but if it makes the council more comfortable, I would be in favor of that. Mr. Winterton? Just, just one comment on the grandfathering clause. I, I don't see how we grandfather for an extended period of 20 years. We don't do that with any rates, with any, that seems like, and so maybe this two-kilowatt hour thing is a better, a better resolution to give some credit there, but not, not a long-term thing. I don't, I don't see how we can do that.
Mr. Sewell?
Well, just, my thought on that is this is a very different situation than most rate changes because you're, you're talking about citizens who invest tens of thousands of dollars to help us achieve our vision and our goals. I, I just see that very differently, and it's, I think it's worth treating it differently in terms of how you would grandfather.
Mr. Harding?
I want to push back a little bit against what Mr. Winterton said about that we don't, that you don't think that it was ever the intention or that it was ever the stated intention to subsidize. I would be shocked if, when the council in 2009, I believe, created the net metering program, that they didn't understand that that would create a subsidization for people who were adopting solar at that time. So, so I want to push back a little bit on that. I do think that it was a choice, it was the policy of the, of the council at the time. The council members have changed, but I think we need to, to at least acknowledge that the council at the time created that, that program, which created that subsidy for, for solar adopters. Was, I guess, there may be a question when, when Mr. Sewell's talking about grandfathering, is that stating that, you know, it's our commitment that for now and for 20 years, the, the rates will never change? Or is that just saying that we, at this point, and, and it's our intention, that we don't take net metering away? So as the rates go up, the rates would go up for everyone, but the, the people that installed solar before this point would be, always be able to use net metering to offset that, so that they, they would still be impacted by rate changes. They just would always have access to that, that net metering.
That sounded like a question. Can I answer that?
Sure.
So I guess the way I would propose it would be grandfathering from 20 years from installation date for the net metering. They would still be subject to changes in the base rate and, and that, yeah.
Mr. Connect?
So not having been around when net metering, at least on the council, was adopted, I would just note that, to me, net metering is, is a way for someone to be able to put energy back into the system and get credit for it. The subsidy comes when we pay more than wholesale. It's not that we're buying it, it's that we're paying more than we, than we buy from any other customer, or producer, I should say.
Mr. Harding?
Probably the biggest thing that I didn't say earlier when I was, was speaking to this is that I think we are 18 months away from a total game changer. In 18 months, we will have smart meters installed everywhere, and we will have a smart billing system. I, I view anything that we do now as just an interim solution because I don't think we want, in my, my, my personal opinion is we don't want more customers buying into solar expecting things not to change for 20 years when, when we think that they are. So, so what we're, we're doing, I think, tonight, I think should be considered just an interim solution. In 18 months, we will be able to, to do all sorts of, of rate structuring so that we can align customers' interests with, with the publicly owned power company's interests. And so I think, you know, as, as you talked about, you know, buying it back at, at a wholesale rate, that's, that becomes possible in 18 months, just, just not yet. And if we, if we go ahead with this proposal, we're talking about, you know, there was a question, did we ever intend to subsidize? Or another question is, do we want to subsidize right now? Understand that the proposal that's before us will continue the subsidization just at a lower rate. If, I would far rather take the money that we're talking about, continue to incentivize, even if it's a lower rate, take the money that we're talking about incentivizing, take 60 days and find out how can we get the most, how can we reach our vision, how can we reach our goals most by investing that money? And maybe, maybe it is in continuing to subsidize rooftop solar. Maybe it makes more sense in, say, community solar or, or something. For, for the people that are against subsidizing, the, the proposal tonight perpetuates that just to a lesser degree. I think it would be much better to take the time to study this out, figure out what our long-term goals are and how best to, to reach those goals.
Mr. Stewart?
18 months from now, we will be able to have a demand and energy charge. So the $6, excuse me, the $3 goes away, and that's where I can support it on a temporary basis. Because if we, and the solar people are going to like it even less if they're, if we really charge what the true cost is on demand. So if you think you can have, so that's where I can support in 18 months, because I think 18 months, I will like to be looking at a new rate schedule, something different than the capacity charge. That's why I don't mind doing a two-kilowatt capacity reduction in the current customers.
Mr. Winterton?
They just handed me a thing here. It said, I remember, it was about six months ago, we had 118 people that were on, that on solar. Six months later, we have 213. By the end of the year, we're looking at 288. And so I, I don't see this as, I see this as really jumping up, and I think we do need to send a message that we're not comfortable with what we've got, with this, with the process that we've got right now. And so I think that if we're just saying, all right, if you're going to sign up, recognize that things will probably change. I don't know how they're going to change. I like the idea of 18 months where we have a more clear vision, where we can actually do it. And I am also concerned about the 288 by the end of the year, that some people have already signed contracts. Maybe they're not on the system yet, but they're already under contract. And so I would like to see if Mr. Stewart were considering in his amended motion that we include those people that would, that have already signed contracts as well, rather than having them installed. They're committed to it, they're just have not had the opportunity to have it installed yet.
How do we know they don't post great contracts?
How do we know what?
They're not going to post great contracts, the salesmen.
The post-date contracts.
I would hope.
One option would be, instead of considering the date of the contract, consider whether or not they've already filed their application with the city for approval.
I would be fine with that. In fact, that was my intention, Gary.
Okay. So I would just establish a date for that termination, that, that end date?
Today.
Today.
Comment?
Mr. Connect?
I think words are important, the definition of words. As we've gone through in our Rules Committee, looking at things that say shall, things that say may, there's a big difference between shall and may in the legal terms. Shall, you have to, may is optional. So when you look at Vision 2030, and we say we're going to promote or encourage or offer opportunities to buy other products that are energy friendly and renewable, do, is there subsidize in any of those? I mean, there's a difference between promoting and encouraging and actually saying, we're going to subsidize. And I don't think subsidize is in Vision 2030, is it, Dave?
I think it's implicit in the net metering program. I mean, it's kind of semantics of how you define subsidize, but clearly, the intent was to offer an incentive to, in my opinion, to pursue renewable energy, so.
Okay, and I, I think net metering in itself is an incentive.
It is an incentive.
Yes. It is an, it's. Yes. It is, it's a way to enable and, and encourage, but then, the question is, at what rate do we buy it back?
Yeah, and that's, you know, that could be part of the roadmap, but I'm not even sure we have that capability right now, and, and you have to signal that kind of thing years in advance, I think. I'm obviously strongly opposed to what we're talking about. I think it sends a bad message to our current customers. I mean, I appreciate the two kilowatts, that's credit, that's something, but still, we're, we're changing the game, change, pulling the rug out from under them to a certain extent, from what they'd planned on when they made those huge investments. I also think this is a huge, loud signal to the solar industry. We're, we're talking about, you know, we had an incentive, now we're coupling that with a disincentive, so we're sending mixed signals there. But I think it's pretty clear from the discussion, we're signaling there's another shoe that may be dropping in a, in a year and a half, and you may like it even less. So I, anyway. I, I think we should take the time to get this right, even if it takes 18 months to, until we have those tools. I just don't see the harm in, in continuing to, you know, if we double the number of solar users, I think that would be a, a good thing, and the, the revenue impact could very easily be made up in a whole variety of ways, including a very modest ba- base rate increase, so.
Mr. Stewart?
We're sending a signal that 29,800 customers aren't going to continue subsidizing, David. That's the signal we're sending. And whether they're going to subsidize at a lesser rate than we are today, because we still will continue to subsidize, but we'll have 18 months to decide whether we want to continue any kind of subsidy for solar. That gives us lots of time before we do a demand and energy charge, because that will affect solar to a greater degree. But it is the true fair way, that, that rate schedule is the fair way for all rate holders.
Well, I guess we'll have to agree to disagree on that. I, I think without doing the cost-benefit analysis that was talked about earlier, we're, we're not going to get an accurate picture of the value.
We have 18 months to do that.
Yeah.
Mr. Harding?
I, I still think that a 90-day moratorium makes a lot of sense. If there's not support for that, I would suggest that we consider signaling at least our intent to, to grandfather the customers that already have applications in, not to a certain rate, but to, that they're, that we're not going to change net metering on them. And then, change how the contract looks, Mr. Ball. Change how that, the contract looks. So in big, bold, 96 font, says, your rates will change. And so it's not a, well, it may change, but really clear that in, in 18 months, we plan on changing how our rate structure is going to be. And if they decide to enter into any agreements at this time, there's, there's no protection, there's no, no expectation of grandfathering. I, I think, I think up until this point, that's not an unreasonable expectation that was there. And I think the, the number of people who have installed or have applied to install are small enough that we can continue to live up to what I feel was, was a commitment. But that anyone that goes forward from now, from this point on, does not have that, that commitment, that there is no expectations that that's going to stay the same. I'd still prefer a moratorium, but that, that might be a way forward.
We can't guarantee that...
Can we vote on it, see if there's four votes to go ahead?
Just a minute. We can't guarantee that the rates will change, because that's a majority vote of the council. And so we can't guarantee that the council's going to vote a certain way in the future. So I don't know if, legally, Brian, can we?
Well, here's what you can do. You can say in the ordinance today, that something will last for 20 years. What you can't say is that nobody will ever go back, will, nobody two years from now won't go in and delete the sentence that says 20 years, right? So, and as a procedural point, I guess I would say, I think we need to take a step back here and think about how we're going to vote on this, because you've got an ordinance in front of you that says you're adopting an amended exhibit. And I think what we're doing is talking about changing the exhibit. And so I think we ought to, what I would recommend is that we have a vote on what the exhibit should say, before you actually vote on the ordinance. And so, what I've been trying to do right now is draft something that reflects what I think is the intent that's been stated, and I'll send that to, to Kelsey in a second, so we can put it up on the screen. But barring any discussion changes here in, in the next few minutes before I get it sent to her, what I've drafted is something that says, well, I'll, I'll just read it, and then you can give me feedback before I even send it to her. What I've got right now says, any net metering customer that as of October 4th, 2016, has either, one, a completed net metering installation, or two, a completed net metering application filed with the city, shall not be charged for the first two KW per month of solar generation capacity. This credit shall apply for 20 years from the installation date of the system. So that's what I understood to be, no, okay, so.
For 18 months, till we, until we make a change, till we get, excuse me. Until we change the rates again.
Okay. So your motion would be to allow the, the two KW per month credit, but only to allow that for?
Because it's going to go away, because if you do go away from any kind of a credit, and go to a different billing system, then it would go away automatically anyway.
So do you even want to, since it's your motion, that I'm dealing with at the moment, you even want a statement in there about duration, or do you just want the credit inserted, and it'll get deleted?
The credit inserted, yes, with other expiration date.
Okay. Anyway, but...
Because then it's going to expire if the credit goes away generally, because we adopt a new rate schedule.
And that helps him with, with crafting what I'm working on right here. But then to go back to the original question, if you wanted a grandfathering system, or a credit system to last for 20 years, you could state that, but stating it doesn't mean that somebody can't change it.
And I wouldn't want to do that, because exactly for that reason. People would count on it, and they can't really count on it.
Mr. Winterton?
That's one of the concerns I've got. Are we guaranteeing something for 20 years that we can't control on the inflation cost? I mean, the grid is going to cost us, we can't guarantee today's prices, 10 years...
But that's what you're, you took the 20 years out.
Yeah, and so I understand that. And so when we're talking about any, any grandfathering, or any protection, is that based on today's rates, or are those based, if we're raising the basis, are we raising it on everybody, is my question?
The way I was contemplating drafting it, it wasn't, it's not based on rates at all.
No, it's based on the base?
No, it, all it says is that you don't get charged for the first two KW. You, you could, two months from now, change the KW charge to $10 per KW, they still wouldn't get charged for the first two. That's the only thing it was going to say. But, but I've taken the, let that out based on the...
And I understand that. And the K, first two KW is to help protect the grid, but the base, the reason we're changing the base is to protect that grid in the first place. And so I think if we're saying that we're going to leave the base forever, over 20 years...
Not changing the base.
We can go in and change the base, is what you're saying, when we do this demand situation.
Mr. Jones explained that we can't bind future councils.
And I agree.
Council changes, could change every two years. You can't bind future councils. So is there such a thing as grandfathering? I mean, would that be, would that have to be in the individual contracts, and then the council couldn't change that? I mean, how does that actually work to grandfather something? We're not saying it's going to be 20 years, but if we're going to grandfather something in, would that have to be individual contracts between the power company and the individuals? How does that really work?
I, I mean, I suppose you could go that route if you wanted it to be binding, absolutely binding with no option for changing it. But what I would recommend is that you just do the same thing that I was just talking about with the two KW credit, right? If you, if, if someone were to propose grandfathering instead, off the top of my head, I think the language for that would simply to be say, simply to say in a footnote next to that charge, this charge does not apply to customers who have a completed installation or a completed application as of today's date. And you're right, six months from now, the council could go back and change that. You've got to have the political will to, to change something that you've actually stated, and your ordinance is going, is the plan going forward, but you could do it.
Mr. Stewart?
That's why I wouldn't be in favor of grandfathering, because it's a unreasonable expectation, well, it's an expectation that people would have, that's, it's not going to become to fruition. That's the whole problem with grandfathering, for, for the council to grandfather, because a future council could change that.
Mr. Sewell?
Go ahead, Mr. Harding. I think he had his hand up first.
I, I was just going to say, I, I think Mr. Winterton may have been confused on what was being proposed. So you're talking about bases and first two kilowatt hours. So my understanding of what, what the proposal was, is basically, as it's written here, which is that there's going to be three kilowatt hours, charge $3 per kilowatt hour, applied to solar users. But the grandfathering is for the ones that have already been installed, or have, applications have been put in, the first two would be exempted.
Yes, and...
Okay.
I got that. I understand that.
And, and I, I do think, Brian, maybe you could answer, respond to this. I, I do think we could put in there, you know, it is our intent that the first two kilowatt hours not be charged for a period of 20 years. So we could, we could put our intent in there without necessarily binding, and...
You can absolutely do that. And, and it's not uncommon, I think, for legislative bodies to do that, when they want to make it harder for future councils to do something, while they recognize that they can't prevent them from doing it.
My motion is not that, I, I want it left without a date.
Mr. Parker?
Just a quick clarification, as we're thinking through the billing ramifications of this. One of the questions was whether the, the two-kilowatt credit would apply to a customer who connected within that timeframe, or a home, the residence, because residents could sell, and we just weren't sure what your intent was, if it was to protect current customers, or if it was to protect current installations. Because a home could sell, someone would come in, sign a new net metering agreement, which would be after the effective date, which would eliminate the two-kilowatt credit. So I, we just want to make sure what your intent is, so we know how to set the billing rate up.
I might suggest, you know, as you say that, to complicate matters even worse. You know, I know with my own installation, having talked to the company about it, the installation, I could move the installation if I moved, right? I mean, I could take the panels off my house and move them to a new house. So what I might suggest is that it goes with the customer, but there's a statement in there that it can be transferred. Although, again, how do you, how do you, how do you obligate them to transfer it if they don't want to transfer it? That's a good question.
I, I think it's an investment in the home, and so I would like to have the opportunity to be able to sell that home without, that, that would hold that value of that home to a better degree, in my mind. So I think that it should not necessar, it could be with both, maybe with the owner and the new, and a new owner. I would just, because I think that holds the value.
With the resident, rather than, not the resident, with the residents, rather than the owner.
With the residents?
With the residents.
And I, I think that that makes sense. It, it holds the value of the home better.
That would be my intent, Wayne.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Mr. Harding?
I'm glad that we're clarifying all of this, but I, I'm personally hoping that it doesn't matter, because, and I don't know if I should make a substitute motion now, or, or see if we vote on it, but I fully intend to, to vote against this, and I, I would like to vote on, on something that, something different. So I don't know if we can... But I, but I do want to, to indicate to the other council members that, that I think there's something better. And so I can either make that motion now, or after our vote, but, but please know that, that I don't think this is the final, this doesn't have to be the final motion, or final idea that we consider.
Mr. Sewell?
I'd agree with that, Mr. Harding, and I, I think we should make a substitute amendment, because if this passes, I'll feel, I'll feel bad that we didn't at least put it out to a vote to, you know, to do the grandfathering. So I don't know if you want to make it, or I could, I could take a stab at, and see if we're on the same page.
Perhaps you should take a stab. I, I, I can't, if, if I make the motion, I can't, I can't support the, the $3 charge, and I can't support grandfather, or not grandfathering. So go, go ahead.
Okay, well, here, here's what I was thinking. For existing customers, we, using that definition that you came up with, for...
Like, it's on the screen, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, they have either completed a net metering installation, or have a completed net metering application filed. So for, for those customers, we would grandfather for 20 years their net metering from installation date, their net metering arrangement. But that would not say anything about base rates, so base rates could, you know, they would be subject to the same base rates as everyone else. Yeah, and, and the net metering, when I, when I say grandfathering the net metering, that's not at any particular rate. I mean, if retail rates change, then that would be reflected in that.
And what would you propose for new solar customers after this date?
Well, what I, what I would really like is to come up with a better solution, but if, if this is the best we can do, then I would, I would propose the two-kilowatt credit that, that Mr. Ball has suggested is a reasonable compromise for, for new customers. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just...
Or would you like to go farther, right?
I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to lay out that plan, that vision.
Yeah, I really would, too.
Have a roadmap. And, and I don't think a $3 charge, to me, is part of that. That's not part of, part of the roadmap. And so I think this is a, a step back. But we need, we do, we need to get four votes for anything to go forward.
Wouldn't it be fine to find out if there's four votes for this, without going through all this? Why not? That's, let's, let's find out.
I'm okay with voting for it, because I'm, I'm really hoping that it will fail, but I, I just...
That's okay.
I'm, I'm just, that's, that's what I'm hoping. But, but I want everyone to really think about, that the, the council created a policy, the council created a vision, adopted a vision, we had residents who acted upon that, and now we're talking about changing, changing that commitment on them. And so, and, and, and Mr. Winterton, if you disagree, let's, let's, let's talk about this, because that's how I see it. So help me understand that, how that's going.
I, I love our citizens of Provo. I don't think that they acted at all, acted on that for the, on the basis of improving Provo. I think they acted on it on the basis of, and, and I'm not going to say everyone, and I agree with that, but I think you're looking at the dollars and cents. And I think that's what 90% of the people went with solar on.
And I'm, I'm okay, I'm not going to dispute that. I'm not going to necessarily agree with that, but I'm not going to dispute that. But I'm going to say that they've, they looked at the dollars and cents because of what the council implemented. They said, we will, we are implementing a net metering policy, and we have this vision. And so that gave them the confidence that I can move forward based on the dollars and cents, or maybe there's some other...
But their, their assumptions of the dollar and cents were not correct, in my mind.
But it was a, it was a policy that the council adopted, and so we're changing that policy.
But the policy didn't discuss dollars and cents. That's the issue that I'm dealing with.
But it said we were going to allow net metering.
And we still will.
Mr. Sewell, that's the case.
I don't know. I'm, I, I, I am concerned for the majority of the citizens of Provo. That is my concern.
I agree. But we're talking about 200 residents. I think we need to stop it now, so it doesn't become 2,000.
I agree.
But we're talking 200 against all of the others. I think we can afford to live up to our commitments on that, because it's, it's such a small percentage. We can't let it go further. But we can, we can honor the commitments that we had for the small percentage that are, that have, that acted on the council's policies.
Chair, I call the question. I know. Mr. Sewell?
I'll, I'll just make one more comment on this, and then I'll, I'll shut up. But... But if, if we don't honor that commitment and that vision that people made those investments and acted on, I don't, I don't see how we have any credibility going forward. Whatever we say we're going to do, we've sent a message that's louder than whatever we say today that will change it and we don't value those investments and that, that partnership that I think we have. So anyway.
Can I clarify the motion? Is that okay?
Yes.
So that we know what we're voting on. So, Mr. Stewart, please correct anything I say that's erroneous. But what I would propose is that the motion, the question that's being voted on is that the document shown on the screen, which is an amended Exhibit A, be adopted as the Exhibit A in question when the ordinance goes forward. And Kelsey, if you can scroll up, just, I just want to make clear. So this, the, the ordinance says that it's adopting the consolidated fee schedule. And this shows the language being added to the consolidated fee schedule, which is the capacity charge with a footnote that then is indicated down below. And so, which I took to be reflective of Mr. Stewart's motion. If there's any changes needed to that, let's do that before voting. Is that in agreement with what your motion intended, Mr. Stewart? And the second was from Mr. Connect?
Okay. Then we're just voting to, to change the document?
To amend Exhibit A as shown on the screen.
Okay. And so those in favor? And those opposed? So those in favor are Mr. Winterton, Mr. Van Buren, Mr. Stewart, and Mr. Connect. And those opposed are Mr. Harding, Ms. Santiago, and Mr. Sewell.
Well, I actually didn't vote because I was, I was confused. So if we're just changing the draft, and the original draft had no, no credit at all in it, right? No, no two kilowatt credit. So I would oppose passing this, but I mean, if we're comparing the drafts, I think this draft is better. So I guess I'll vote for it.
So you want to vote for it? So you can change Mr. Sewell's vote for the amendment? And I guess I'll explain that I, I don't know what this, you know, having them not be charged for the first two kilowatt hours or the two kilowatts per month is going to do. We haven't vetted that with the, with, with the solar companies. We haven't vetted that with, you know, to see if this is going to make a difference. And so, anyway, so it's my reasoning. I probably should have explained that before the vote, but... So now we are going to vote on...
Now there's, now you have an exhibit, you have an updated exhibit to attach to the proposed ordinance, but there's no motion on the table at the moment.
Okay. Can I put Mr. Walters, Dr. Walters on the spot and ask you to, for my benefit, to explain if you feel like this is, what your thoughts are about this amended ordinance with the two kilowatt, I guess, allowance that they won't be charged for? Does that make a difference? Does that...
If the average size of an installed system is somewhere around seven kilowatts, that's a significant reduction on the, on the monthly fee. We heard tonight that there are a number of installations that are significantly larger. And obviously, the larger the installation, the less significant this, this becomes. If it's a six-kilowatt system, this is a 33% reduction in that, in the charge. I don't think it addresses the fundamental issues that we discussed earlier. But that's what the impact would be. Again, that, based on my understanding of the average system installed in the city is somewhere between six and eight kilowatts, so.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Winterton?
Yeah, I, I agree that we do need to discuss the base, base rate. To me, that's the whole thing, but we have no ability to do that at this point. That's my concern. And this is sending out a signal that, yes, we recognize we have a deficiency in what we've got that we can't correct for 18 months. So that's why I feel that this is important to do now.
Why can't we address the base rate at this point? I don't understand.
Because we don't know what the base rate, we, we haven't got, we've got a $26 base rate. We haven't got the actual metering system that will, will control that. Travis, help me with this. Is that, what are we going to gain in 18 months? We're going to be, figure out, be able to do a demand or, and a, that we can't do now?
In the future, you'll be able to do a demand rate. You can, you can adjust the base rate anytime. It would just be, you would just be affecting a lot of customers.
A lot of customers. And, and I understand that this is, we are, we're starting with the solar customers that we love and appreciate. And I do. Okay. I do. And I believe it's the future.
Is there any further discussion? We'll look for a motion?
Yes. Mr. Jones?
It just occurred to me that what we have not done at this point is indicated in any way the effective date of the rate change. As it stands right now, the effective date is going to be the effective date of the ordinance, which is going to be sometime in the next two weeks. And I, I think you, it might be wise for you to consult with Karen Larson about the actual implementation time for changing the rate and maybe add an effective date to the ordinance, which in some ways may buy you some time in the sense that if you, depending on where the council's at with, with the issue, if you set the effective date three months from now, then nobody actually gets charged until that time. And that gives you some time to think about it if, if there were things to think about. But my, my biggest concern is not trying to delay it, but just the issue of that. I don't think, from my understanding of our billing system, that it's possible for her to start charging this rate two weeks from today.
Ms. Larson, do you mind coming to the podium?
Karen Larson, Division Director of Customer Service. Yes, that would cause me a little bit of grief. I prefer minimum 30 days for implementation, but I'd prefer longer given, that's for sure. I also want to mention that we have had several citizens call our billing staff. And the concern that I see is, that we're hearing is the customers may be misled oftentimes on what the salesperson is giving them information based on customers' expectation. The expectation of the customers oftentimes, on their next bill, they should have a great credit and all should be well. That is not the case. And I just want to make sure that our, with all due respect, those, the, the solar companies out there need to be very clear and honest with our citizens as they're communicating the sale of those panels because it's very difficult for us as a billing to try to explain to them that, no, you're not getting a credit right now and you're not, you are going to have to have, you know, some charges on your bill.
Question?
Mr. Connect?
So are those people you're hearing from? And I appreciate the fact that you stay in touch or hear from the customers. Are they saying that they invested because of the city's policies or because of the sale?
What we're hearing, and I am obviously not having a direct conversation with them. It is through my billing team. They're looking for the savings. They're looking for the cost savings, definitely. No information has been passed based on, you know, green savings or anything like that. It's, it's based on costs. And that's why they get very angry. And all we can do is, you know, tell them the facts of their, their usage and information off their billing. So very difficult for us.
Okay, so 30 days or longer?
30 days minimum, please.
30 days minimum, but what would be ideal?
Three months. We are actually right now very involved with Energy's project with the implementation of the AMI meters. The AMI meters are helping us produce data and information for the net billing. And so we don't have very, we have five customers out there right now with the AMI net meters on them. So we don't got a lot, we don't have a lot of data coming through. So it'd be very helpful if we, one, were able to install these meters over time. And at the same time, we'd be able to collect all the correct information off of this system on the received and the delivered consumption, which we don't have. We have a lot of mechanical meters out there that are spinning backwards and it's really difficult to get the right data that we need, so.
Thank you.
Implementing this doesn't have anything to do with that?
This right here? I'm just, I got a couple different parts in there, but the, the implementation of the rate for itself, we have to go in and set up a, an additional piece to this rate because you, you've asked for a two-kilowatt credit. So I have to determine who, what the individual rates are for these 150, 60, 70 customers. And it's pretty much an individual setup on each, each account. That's the time that I'm needing.
And you can't do that in 30 days? Ninety.
You know, I will always do what I'm asked to do with the limited staff that I have or, you know, hours we need to put in. If I'm asked to do it, I definitely will do it, but I prefer to have a little bit of time so that we do something. We always like to test the bills. We just don't like to go out and change the rate and hope you get a good bill in hand.
No, no, my, my question was honest. If you really can't do it 30 days comfortably, then we can go longer.
30 days is fine. 30 days can work.
Can you put that in, if that's our intent, do we have to put in the ordinance?
Yes, what I would suggest, and there's a part two to the ordinance that has the effective date in it. And so I would be looking for a motion from someone to amend that section and I would stick an effective date in there.
What does the council feel comfortable with? 30 days? Are you okay? 60?
90.
Huh?
90.
With roughly 90, we could say January 1st.
Would that help?
That helps a lot.
I would then make that motion that the effective date be January 1st. 2017.
Mr. Strachan?
For some context, are you interested in, in the dollar values we're talking? We're talking about a, based on the actual capacity. We're looking at about $48,000 a year in revenue, less about $16,000 a year for the, for the, essentially the grandfathered cohort. So we're not talking huge sums yet, but that's the dollar values you're talking about. So delaying two, three months is not going to cost a lot in the revenue stream.
And by the same token, grandfathering all of the existing customers would not, would be less than a drop in the bucket compared to the total revenues of the power company.
And we got beat up over 13 cents a month. 13 cents a month increase for that. And so I, I struggle with that, with, with more.
Do we need a second on that motion, the effective date?
Yes. Is there a second on the motion, Mr. Connect? To change the effective date?
To January 1st, 2017.
Okay. So any discussion? All right. So those in favor? Mr. Connect? And the voting was unanimous in the affirmative for changing the date? Right. So any more discussion or we'll look for a motion?
I move that we amend the, the Exhibit A so that any net metered residents as of October 4th, 2016, that has either completed net meter installation or has completed a net metering application filed with the city, shall not be charged for their solar generation capacity. In effect, grandfathering them from, from the change that we're talking about. This change would only be effective for future solar customers. And that's my, that's my motion.
Second?
My, my motion is to change this footnote. And instead of exempting the first two kilowatt hours, it's exempting their whole power generation, their, their whole system. It's, it's grandfathering them and, and I... What's that? Exempting, yeah, grandfathering them, exempting them the capacity charge for anyone who already has it in. And I, and I ask you to consider if you are a resident and the council says, "We're going to offer net metering and we want to encourage renewable energy." And you refinance your house and take out $30,000 to put in a system based on the signals that the council at the time was giving, that we were going to offer net metering. You make that an investment. And then five years later, a new council says, "Just kidding, we're not going to allow net metering anymore." That, think about what you would feel if you made that investment based on the commitment of the previous council and how you would feel if a new council changed that.
I, I can understand that feeling. And I could do that, but, but I am really concerned. We are going to raise the base rate then. We will raise the base rate.
For 200 customers?
Yes. Why, for fairness? For everyone, the base rate for everyone is what I'm saying. And so, and that's...
Ask the, the audience to please refrain from speaking at this time. Thank you.
So if I understand the motion and my second of it, we are not saying anything about base rates. I think we're okay with raising the base rate. I think it's inevitable that the base rate is going to go up for all the reasons that we've been talking about. And it, you know, could be a small amount or we could take bigger steps. But that's not really addressed in this resolution. I think all we're saying is, don't hit existing customers with this tax.
Chair? Yes, Mr. Stewart?
I oppose the amended motion.
Is there a second for the amended motion?
Yeah, I seconded it.
Oh, you seconded it?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on the amended motion? So, Mr. Jones, will you explain?
The way I understood the motion, and I have a draft here, but I would, I would just, looking at what is on the screen right now, I would just change it so that it says, "Shall not be charged this solar generation capacity charge." So anybody who meets those criteria just doesn't get charged the, the capacity charge.
So anyone who currently has solar or has made their application by today?
Is that the intent of the...
Application or...
That is my motion. Thank you.
That they won't be... And so any future ones will be, will be charged, any future applications will be charged?
To me, it kind of gets back to the question, can we really make it all up in just the base rate? Because there's more to it than that, the way we do our billing. We rely on people buying product. And if they don't buy product, how do we make it up?
So I feel like we've had several hours of discussion on this item. And so I, I, I'm still holding out for a meeting of the people that I suggested. I mean, that's still my, the only reason why I vote against this tonight is that I don't feel like it's been fully vetted. I feel like we get that committee together, we figure it out, we come back. This is a much easier decision. It's a much easier decision if we've had a little more vetting with all the players at the table. And so I, I'm, I could prob, I could vote for this in two weeks if this is what that committee comes back with. You know, if we had that confidence that this is the best policy that we have right now, I could vote for this. If that, if the vetting came back and we could get that confidence level. But I'll be voting against it tonight because I just, I don't feel like that's happened. I feel like there's, I don't feel the rush or the urgency to do it tonight. I'd rather get it right than be fast. And so that's why I'll be voting against it.
So I fully agree with you. I fully agree with you. If the council chooses to move forward with this tonight, I plead with you to consider grandfathering the ones that are already... are already in place. That's why I made this motion. I support holding off, but if we're going to pass it tonight, please consider grandfathering those who have already made the investment.
Okay. So, then we have the motion by Mr., sorry, Mr. Harding, and then, did you second that? It was Mr. Sewell that seconded. This is the amended?
This is simply a motion to amend the exhibit, to extend to grandfather.
Grandfathering those who currently have, yeah. So, we're just amending the document right now.
And just one clarification. I think, as far as deciding whether to vote for this or not, that the decision should be, do you like this draft better than the other one?
And I, and I'm, you know what, and I don't oppose this draft. I oppose, I just don't want to pass it tonight.
Yeah, and I agree with that.
So, that's, but yeah, I'm, I'm good with this. I should have clarified. I'm good with the revision. I just don't want to vote on the final thing tonight. So, yeah, I should have made that.
And this revision says, if someone comes in tomorrow and signs up an application, they will be charged the $3, but they will be given a two-kilowatt exemption?
No two-kilowatt exemption. As written and as the motion stands, everyone who already has it in place will not be charged. Anyone who comes in tomorrow will be charged $3 on every kilowatt hour with no $2 or two-kilowatt hour exemption.
So, any further discussion?
So, just one last clarification. So, I'm voting for this because I think it's better than the other draft, but I actually would prefer to have the two-kilowatt credit on the new customers, but we can address that separately.
Okay. So, any further discussion? Those in favor? And those opposed? I'm sorry. Did you raise your hand, or not?
I did not.
Okay. So, those in favor? Sorry, let's do a favor first, so I can get, okay? And those opposed? Okay. And abstaining? Okay. So, we have Mr. Connect abstaining. We have those in favor, Mr. Harding, Ms. Santiago, and Mr. Sewell. And we have those opposed, Mr. Stewart, and Mr. Van Buren, and Mr. Winterton.
So, I have a question. Were we voting on a final, or just the text change?
Text change.
Just the text change on that one?
Okay.
Okay.
So, can I vote late?
So, you want to vote late? Sure.
I'll vote in favor of the text change, just...
Okay. So, Mr. Connect, in favor of that motion? So, any further discussion or motion? Or we can call it a night and go home? Continue this meeting, the whole meeting? I'm kidding. I know it's late. It's late for all of you, too. We appreciate you hanging in there with us. It's not an easy decision.
So, what is before us? You want, who made the?
So, now, so we've amended the document, and so now, we're, there's no motion on the table. We're looking for either more comment or a motion.
So, Dave, you made the motion originally to amend?
So, my understanding, what's before us is Mr. Stewart's, well, I can't even call it that. What's before us is an exhibit that adds a $3 solar generation capacity charge with the exemption of anyone who has it in place now. So, any future solar customers' installations would be charged a capacity charge of $3 per kilowatt hours per month, but it would not affect anyone who already has it in place. So, I think that's the exhibit that's before us.
So, everyone's looking at me. I do have trouble with the grandfathering, because I think people need to be contributing into the system, and so that's the essence of the whole night's discussion. And so, I will be voting against this.
Okay. So, you just voted, and I'm sorry, we didn't make that very clear, in the last one, you voted to include the grandfathering clause in this document. So, and, so you'll be voting against this, the revised document? Okay. Okay. So, is there a motion?
I have just a question.
Sure.
And that's going to be directed at Mr. Connect. Your last vote was to not vote for the grandfathering. Now, you're not going to support this motion because of the grandfathering, so I'm a little bit confused. I just, we're trying to understand your reasoning, so it'll help me understand.
It was to support the grandfathering. The last vote was to support the grandfathering, and now, now that it's in the document, yeah.
Basically, maybe this goes back to our discussions of putting things out. It's one way or the other. I just, maybe I shouldn't have supported that. If that causes confusion, but at least we had something concrete to vote on.
Can he reconsider his vote on the last, if he didn't mean to vote that way?
The vote's been taken, so someone in the prevailing party on the previous motion could make a motion to reconsider their vote.
And he wasn't the prevailing. That's why I'm asking.
He was in the prevailing party, but then it would have to be seconded and voted on to allow the reconsideration.
Madam Chair, I move that we continue this item.
No, the item hasn't been voted on. We voted to change the document. We haven't voted on this yet. We haven't voted on the completed document. So, that's, the motion is to continue the item. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Sewell. Is there, so a date certain, or just continue it until we're ready to come back with it?
Continue it until we're ready to come back with it.
Okay. So, any, yeah, discussion on the motion?
I am, I am sorry if I caused confusion, and I would like to hear from my colleagues as to whether they would like to continue this or settle it tonight.
I haven't changed my position. I want to settle it tonight.
Mr. Sewell?
Well, I, we're clearly very conflicted about this, and like you said, Chair Santiago, I would love to get some of these people in the same room, and, I mean, I've been sitting in, heard the power boards and the energy boards' take on it, and then I'll talk to the clean energy and solar energy folks, and let's get that discussion going.
Any other discussion on the motion? The motion was to continue the item, and it was Mr. Harding was, the motion and the second was Mr. Sewell, yeah.
I won't be able to support that without a date certain, and the longest date I'd consider is two weeks. I'm just, I've been studying this for two years.
So, do you want to amend that to a date certain, or?
No. I'd like to see if, if I understood what Mr. Connect was saying, is he wouldn't be able to vote on this, and I think we may have three others that would also not vote positively for this. So, I think if those four people were willing to vote to continue, I think we can just continue it indefinitely, and maybe two weeks is long enough, and it'll come back. But I'd just vote to continue it. I'd, that's my motion. I'd like to see if it has the support.
Okay. Are there other comments? Okay. So, we're voting to continue the item. I know it was seconded by Mr. Sewell. So, those in favor? And those opposed? So, those in favor are Ms. Santiago, Mr. Harding, and Mr. Sewell, and those opposed are Mr., yeah, I know your name, Mr. Winterton, Mr. Van Buren, Mr. Stewart, and Mr. Connect. It's a little late. Okay. So, do we have another motion?
Move that we vote, turn down the motion that's before us.
Vote against the ordinance before us?
I mean, yes, the ordinance, sorry.
Okay. Is there a second?
Well, I think it would be more proper to make a motion to amend it in the way that you would like to amend it.
As I understand the motion, so what you have in front of you is you have a draft ordinance that says it goes into effect on January 1st, 2017, that adds a $3 per kilowatt hour solar capacity charge, and grandfathers everyone currently in. If you make a motion to turn down, to reject that ordinance, and it passes, then there is nothing on the table.
Hmm.
Just to make...
Then we need to amend it. Sorry. I move to amend it back to where we were before I messed it up.
With the two-kilowatt hour concession, however that was worded before. Is there a second?
What are we seconding?
He's wanting to amend the grandfathering clause back to having, that they won't be charged the two-kilowatt hour. So, what it was before, is that correct, Mr. Connect?
You're simply making a motion to change the exhibit, not the ordinance, right? Because the effective date is in the ordinance. So, you're making, as I understand it, you're making a motion to change Exhibit A back to the form that it was after Mr. Stewart's motion, which adds a $3 per kilowatt hour capacity charge, and exempts current installations from the first two KW.
That's correct.
It will have an effective date of January 1st, 2017.
Correct.
So, we're back to, back to voting on what I had proposed previously?
Correct.
So, if I vote for this, I voted for what I voted for previously?
Yes.
Thank you.
But not to approve it, just to change the text of the exhibit, back to what it was. Nothing will still be approved.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Connect, and we have a second by Mr. Van Buren. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Harding?
This is the item that never ends. I just ask council members to look out into the crowd, the people who made significant investment, and we're changing the rules on them. We're talking 200 customers. We don't have to change it for them. We just, we just change it for everyone in the future, but we allow the people that have already made that calculation, that judgment. They were going to do it based on what the council said is their policy and their intent, and just let these 200 people, don't change the rules on these 200 people. That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking. So, I'm going to be voting against this.
Mr. Stewart?
I haven't said this in the past, but I'm not sure very many people made the decision based on what the council said or didn't say. I think they made the decision on what the salesman said.
That's true, but the council said that net metering was our policy that allowed the salesman to go in and say, "You can get this."
Okay, fine.
Mr. Sewell?
Ms. Larson had her hand up. I was wondering if she was going to lighten us on something here.
If you don't grandfather, or you do grandfather, I don't need the three months, I will say, or January. You can implement that for all new solar customers now. I don't need the time.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
We have a second?
Yeah. So, we have a motion by Mr. Connect, a second by Mr. Van Buren. Any further discussion?
Just a triple ditto on Mr. Harding's comments there.
Okay. So, those in favor?
One question. Was that, so the motion is for a date, January 1st, still?
No, that's a separate issue. Right now, all, right now, all you're doing is voting as to what the text of the exhibit should be, which, you're changing it from grandfathering everybody to allowing the grandfathered people to have a two-kilowatt credit.
I assume you also put in January 1st?
Well, we can. I'd rather keep that as a separate motion if this one passes, because that's a change to the draft of the ordinance, not the exhibit. So, if this passes, then based on Ms. Larson's comment, then it would be appropriate for someone to make a motion to change the effective date of the ordinance.
Mr. Jones, I'm confused. So, didn't we already change it to January 1st?
Yes, but I think she just said, oh, sorry. If this passes, it wouldn't be appropriate to change it. If this fails, then it might be appropriate to change the date.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? So, those in favor? And those opposed? Okay. Those in favor are Mr. Winterton, Mr. Van Buren, Mr. Stewart, and Mr. Connect, and those opposed are Mr. Harding, Ms. Santiago, and Mr. Sewell. Okay. So, we just voted to amend the text of the ordinance, and so, look for a motion. Either more discussion or a motion to approve, or to amend if we need to amend it further?
We're voting to approve the motion with the January 1st date.
The January 1st date is already there, yes.
I made that motion.
So, you've moved to approve as written now, as it's been amended?
Yeah.
Okay. So, there's been a motion by Mr. Stewart to approve the ordinance as amended, and is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Van Buren.
Discussion?
Discussion?
No, I'm still not opposed to having those discussions now. We still have 90 days to talk about this, but I think that it's time that we start recognizing our obligation to the grid.
So, if you just, if you agree with discussions, now would be the time to do that, or to vote for that, I would think.
If the motion is to adopt based on a January 1st, that's one thing. If you choose to continue to talk about it without making a decision, then that timeline moves however long you move the conversation.
I think if people want the discussion, they've got 90 days to do it. And if not, then we, we're ready to go, then we're ready, we're in place.
Mr. Sewell?
I don't know who's going to be motivated to discuss anything after.
I'm motivated.
I know, but if the decision is made tonight, it just goes into effect in 90 days. So, if you're in favor of having discussion, it would be better to continue this item, have the discussion, and come back at a future date to make a decision, in my opinion, because if we make a decision tonight, I don't, I don't know that the discussions are going to take place or be, you know, be difficult. Any further discussion? Okay. So, the motion on the table is to adopt the ordinance as it is before us now, and we had a second. Mr. Stewart was the second, you were the motion? No, sorry. Remind me. Mr. Stewart was the motion, and Kate Van Buren was the second. So, those in favor? And those opposed? So, those in favor are Mr. Winterton, Mr. Van Buren, Mr. Stewart, and Mr. Connect, and those opposed are Mr. Harding, Ms. Santiago, and Mr. Sewell. So, the motion carries. Yes, Mr. Sewell?
Just a suggestion, since we've gone past the hour that we're supposed to turn into pumpkins, are there any items that we can continue tonight?
Madam Chair, we've actually had a request from the applicant on Item 6 to continue to the next council meeting.
Okay.
If that would help your schedule this evening, so...
That's helpful.
There may be some here who've been waiting for a very long time to talk about that issue, so you might want to check that first.
Were you here for Item 6 tonight? Okay. Beth, I'm going to owe you lunch again for doing this to you. I'm sorry. I'm going to plan this better next time.
Let's go to the floor anyway.
Okay. So, I think we'll continue this item to, I'm sorry, lunch. Just call me. I owe you again.
Madam Chair?
Can you get a motion?
Yeah, we can vote on those two, I think, four and five, but we'll, we'll continue. Yeah, we can vote on those two, I think, 4 and 5, but we'll, we'll continue Item 6, or we can move to a motion to continue when we get there. Or should we do it now? Is there a motion to continue Item 6? Okay.
So, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to continue Item 6. And we're done to the next, did you request a date? Wayne, is there any harm in continuing Item 4?
There is, because we have a time-sensitive contract that we're waiting to execute with an asphalt contractor on the fleet building that's dependent on this. So, we, we don't have two weeks on that one. We're checking on the power plant lease to see.
It seems like 4 and 5 would be pretty quick.
I think they'll be pretty straightforward.
Let's, let's just make that motion to continue Item 6.
Okay. So, there's a motion to continue, continue Item 6 by Mr. Van Buren. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Those in favor? And the voting, the voting is unanimous with Mr. Sewell excused. So, we will now hear a resolution appropriating $260,000 in the General CIP Fund for purposes related to the fleet facility project and applying to the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017. This will be presented by John Borgat, Director of Administrative Services. Oh, this will be by Dustin Graybaugh. Thank you.
Thank you, council members. If you recall during the end of the budgeting process for the 2017 budget, we made changes to the General CIP for the fleet facility. What was omitted from those changes was a portion that was accounted for in the sanitation CIP fund, already had a transfer to the General CIP, but the reciprocal was not recognized, the revenue in the General CIP and the associated appropriation of that $260,000 for the construction of the fleet facility. So, the motion before you is to amend that oversight and to appropriate the funds that are already dedicated in the sanitation fund.
So, moved.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Harding. Is there a second?
I think we need to have a public hearing.
Oh, we do? Oh, yes, because it's an appropriation from the, okay. Thank you. Appreciate you keeping us on track. So, we will open this up to the public. If there's anyone here in attendance who would like to comment on this item, please come to the podium and state your name and city of residence. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for a motion.
I move that we approve.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Harding. We have a second by Mr. Stewart. Any discussion? Those in favor? Thank you. The voting is unanimous with, in the affirmative, with Mr. Sewell excused. Number 5 is a resolution approving a power plant property lease agreement between Provo City and Utah Municipal Power. This will be presented by Mr. Brian Jones, our council attorney, or?
Go ahead, Travis. I'm not going to fight you.
Or Mr. Ball? Love to hear again from you tonight, if you'd like to present.
Thank you, council. As you know, we, we've been working with UMPA for a, a power plant on our side. As part of that, we went out for a, to, to see what that property is worth, to lease the property just south of our new building. We got a, a appraisal back from a consultant. The range of that annual lease ranged from about $12,000 to $20,000 with the best use of that property. As we started negotiating with UMPA on that, that cost, we realized to come to that property, there's very few uses for that property, the, we required them to upgrade the power plant to match the rec center and our building. And that was an increase of about $350,000 on their project. But we really wanted that plant, we really want that plant in Provo. I think that was very important because we, it's a backup to the hospital and to the rec center. So, as part of that, that negotiation, we, we consented to go at the lower rate, at the $12,000 rate, and then with a 1% escalator on that cost going forward. And so, we kind of negotiated those, those price points. Is there any questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Ball? You've come to us at a good time.
Just, just a comment. I, I, that sounds very reasonable, and it, it sounds like we're, we're looking out for the best interest of, of the agency, as well as the city and the residents. And so, I appreciate the negotiations that you just described.
I will say, when it comes to air quality, this plant actually does improve the air quality in Utah County. I mean, we reduced NOx by 97% over the old plant. So, when we talk about improving air quality, this plant actually does that, that very well.
Mr. Harding?
Is it gas-powered or is it diesel-powered?
Gas-powered. The reason why, and it went sailing through the air quality, I mean, Springville is still trying to get an air quality permit for their generators that they have on site and already have, have been tested. They still haven't got the air quality permit. But because we presented it with a full SCR on all five of those units, it went through, and there was an increased cost for the SCR, but it does improve the air quality for Utah County.
Thank you.
And for the city of Provo.
Are there other questions for Mr. Ball? We'll look for a motion. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Van Buren. Those in favor? The voting is unanimous in the affirmative with Mr. Sewell excused. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ball. And I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'd also like to apologize for prolonging our agony tonight and kind of screwing up, so.
You don't need to apologize. We're all tired, so.
I move that we adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Winterton. All in favor? I guess that's unanimous, unanimous with Mr. Sewell excused. Thank you. We're too tired to lift our hands.